With that, I'll call the September ninth, two, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of council to order at six P. M. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I have two which I've submitted to the clerk and they resolve around, uh, report A dash zero zero five dash two four, Ingersoll Cemetery. I am a board member appointed by the plot holders and I receive compensation for that, so I will not participate in that. And then also, uh, I will be, I don't believe it's a pecuniary interest, but from a conflict standpoint, uh, C dash zero two three dash two four, uh, with integrity commissioner, uh, appointment, uh, conversation, uh, I have a current, uh, complaint issue with the, uh, commissioner, and so I won't be taking part in the, uh, discussion or vote on that item. Uh, the deputy mayor will be in the chair for both of those. Any, uh, further pecuniary and declarations of pecuniary interests? Seeing none, um, we will now ask councillor Hallerew for the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, dear mayor. Move on myself, councillor Hallerew, seconded by councillor Van Cooten-Bossens, that the items contained in the September ninth, twenty twenty four consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And councillor Van Cooten-Bossens, the minutes from the August twelfth meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Wilson. Excuse me. That the minutes of the August twelfth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of council be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Discussion.
Um, I do.
Seeing none. All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we'll now move on to special staff reports, and I will turn it over to Mr. Graves for, uh, our first one, Astro Homes Limited, please.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn this directly over to our planner for the planning report.
So, good evening, uh, council staff members of the public. Uh, for you of the application for zone change, and this is a supplementary report for ZN six twenty four oh two in the name of Astro Homes Limited. The application for zone change proposes to rezone the subject lands from residential type one to special residential zone type two to facilitate the development of two semi-detached dwellings totaling four dwelling units. This zone change application is related to severance applications B twenty four twenty two six, B twenty four twenty three six, and B twenty four twenty four six, which were conditionally approved by Oxford County's Land Division Committee on June sixth, twenty twenty four. The subject lands are locate, are described as part lots three to five, block fifty, plan two seventy nine in the town of Ingersoll. The lands are located on the north side of King Street East between Daniel Street and Morrison Avenue and are municipally known as one fifty five King Street East. The subject lands are designated low-density residential in Oxford County's official plan, are currently zoned R one in the town of Ingersoll zoning by law, and are proposed to be zoned R two thirty in town of Ingersoll zoning by law. The subject lands, uh, will generally meet all of the zone provision criteria of the R two zone, the exception of the, uh, frontage, which is requires relief, or in this case a special zoning, um, provision, to permit a lot frontage of eight point nine meters, where the minimum zone standard is typically nine meters. The subject lands are approximately fourteen hundred and seventeen point eight square meters in area and contain, and they did contain, they're cleared now, a single detached dwelling, which has been removed. The subject lands are predominantly surrounded by single detached dwellings. The subject property is located within the low-density residential designation according to the town of Ingersoll residential density plan as contained in the official plan. Low-density residential areas include those lands that are primarily developed or planned for a variety of low-rise, low-density housing forms, including single detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, duplexes, converted dwellings, quadruplexes, townhouses, and low-density, low-density cluster development. In these districts, it is intended that there will be a mixing and integration, integration of different housing forms to achieve a low-density use. The proposal is considered a street-oriented infill, and for such projects to be sensitive to the existing streetscape, town council, inland division will ensure that the proposal is consistent with street frontage, lot area setbacks, and spacing of existing development within the immediate residential area. For provo, for proposals involving more than two dwelling units, the exterior design in terms of height, bulk, scale, and layout of the proposed building is consistent with present land uses in the area, and the proposal complies with the policies for the infill, for infill developments. The application requests to rezone the subject lands from R one to special R zone two to permit the proposed semi-detached dwellings. Semi-detached dwellings in the R two zone require a minimum lot area of two hundred and seventy square meters, a minimum lot depth of thirty meters, and a minimum lot frontage of nine meters. A special provision to the zoning bylaw is required to permit a lot, minimum lot frontage of eight point nine meters for the proposed lots, where the typical lot frontage is nine meters in the R two zone. Planning staffer have the opinion that the proposal accommodates the planned and expected growth within the town of Ingersoll in accordance with section one point one point three point one of the PPS. Further, the proposal supports residential intensification and promotes a mix of housing types in an area that are suitable for infrastructure and public service facilities are available. As such, staffer satisfied that the proposal is consistent with the PPS regarding development and settlement areas. Planning staffer satisfied that the approval, that approval of the proposal will be in keeping with the policies of the low-density residential dis, designation and relevant policies of the official plan. Planning staffer also generally satisfied that the minor reduction lot frontage required from the, from nine meters to eight point nine meters will be sufficient to accommodate the proposed development. Planning staffer satisfied that the proposal is consistent with the provincial policy statement and maintains the intent of the residential infill policy criteria of the official plan. Therefore, staff recommend that the town, that the council of the town of Ingersoll approve the zone change application submitted by Astro Homes Limited for the subject lands described as part lots three to five, block fifty, plan two seventy nine, town of Ingersoll, to rezone the subject lands from residential type one to residential type two dash thirty to permit the development of four new semi-detached dwellings, as well as the reduction of the minimum lot frontage for semi-detached dwellings to eight point nine meters from nine meters.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the report? Seeing none. Deputy Mayor Wilson, I believe you have a resolution. Oh, sorry, councillor Hughes.
Yeah, no, I was very excited about that. Um, do we have any, uh, this is, uh, through the mayor to Justin. Um, do we have any other properties in the town of Ingersoll that have been reduced in the frontage by, uh, to this?
Mr. Graves, would you like to say that?
Yes, I, I can't think of one, uh, specific, uh, to answer councillor Hughes, but I have seen ones of a similar nature. Uh, and if I speak out of turn, uh, the planner will, uh, guide me. Uh, this is fairly close to what the setback in, or what the requirement normally is. Uh, I think this would meets the really sort of true test of what a minor variance is because it's, it's not a very significant variance. So, um, I, I think I would suggest it's, it'd be fairly common.
Any follow-up councillor Hughes? Deputy Mayor Wilson?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hudson, that the council of the corporation of the town of Ingersoll receive planning report CP twenty twenty four dash two six eight as information, and that the council of the corporation of the town of Ingersoll approve the zone change application submitted by Astro Homes Limited for the lands described as part lots three to five, block fifty, plan two seventy nine in the town of Ingersoll to rezone the subject lands from residential type one zone R one to special residential type two zone, uh, R two dash thirty to permit the development of four new semi-detached dwellings, as well as a reduction to the minimum lot frontage for a semi-detached dwelling unit to eight point nine meters or twenty nine point two feet.
Thank you. Discussion. Uh, I'm certainly supportive of this. I think that this is exactly the type of infill development that, uh, we like to see. This is very efficient use of the land, and I think, uh, a reduction of like point three feet, I believe, for the, uh, uh, frontage is, is exactly what the C A O has mentioned, very minor, and, uh, it can be accommodated. So, uh, I think this is exciting. We go from one residential unit and we're going to have four at the end of this, and so, uh, we're going to see some density here that, uh, we need and the type of housing that we need as well. So, certainly supportive of that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the next item, which I will leave the chair.
Thank you. So, moving on through special staff reports, we're looking at consideration of staff report C dash oh two three twenty four extension, or sorry, new structure of Ingersoll Cemetery, A dash zero zero five twenty four. So, Mr. Graves, if you could cover the staff report.
Thank you. Yes, we know the current model of management of this cemetery is no longer really sustainable. Uh, staff at the township of Zora and the town of Ingersoll are working closely together to decide how to proceed to establish a new model of administration and management of the facility and utilize our skills of our various municipalities the best we possibly can. Um, this report starts to go over what we would need to do to take over that and how it would, the preliminary questions we're trying to answer. I want council to be aware that an exact version of this report was recently received by Zora Council as well.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any questions from council about the report? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, through you to, uh, city hall, uh, Mr. Graves, currently we have a very amicable, good working relationship with Zora Township. Um, will there be any, uh, uh, what would be, if any, follow-up if that relationship were to go not as good as what it is currently with Zora Township?
Uh, if I could through you, uh, council will be aware there's been a number of bylaws that have established how the cemetery would be managed over the years. Uh, we're going to have to, as we get further along, develop a new bylaw that forms an agreement between ourselves and Zora over how we manage it, and it will have to be a very tight agreement that will need legal advice from both municipalities to make sure that it meets the criteria and have methodologies for change. Uh, some of these bylaws, as you guys have seen, have been from the fifties and the seventies, which, uh, for some of us seem like only a few days ago, but, but, uh, uh, it, you know, these bylaws can be in place for a long time, so we have to try, I think, ahead of what, you know, new configurations might take place, and methodologies to change those agreements, uh, will be incorporated into that, the bylaw. But that's part of the complexity, and that's why, as we're sort of telegraphing this report, this is going to take us several months to get to a place where we can actually form a new form of an agreement, a new administration model.
Any further questions of the report? Sorry, councillor Hughes, did you have another question?
No, no, that was it.
Perfect. So councillor Hudson, you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Bowman, that the council, uh, that the council of the corporation of the town of Ingersoll receive staff report A dash zero zero five dash twenty four as information, and that staff be directed to continue to pursue, pursue new structure for the Ingersoll Cemetery based on the parameters I learned in the report.
Thank you, councillor Hudson. Any comments or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? None opposed? That's carried. Moving on to the next staff report, extension of interim integrity commissioner appointment, staff report C dash zero two three twenty four. Mr. Graves?
I'm going to turn this one directly over to our clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so this report seeks approval to extend the appointment of John Mascaren as council's interim integrity commissioner and closed-meeting investigator for a proposed additional three months. Uh, the extension is necessary as the process of selecting a permanent replacement for the previous integrity commissioner, Mr. Robert Swayze, is still underway. Uh, really, the extra time will ensure a thorough evaluation of options and allow Mr. Mascaren's team to complete any ongoing investigations that may be happening at the moment. Uh, the extension will not require additional financial resources as it falls within the current budget. Uh, the recommendation is for council to approve the extension and then for staff to provide a, a further update to council in the coming months as we progress, uh, through some, uh, open investigations. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Councillor Hallerew?
Uh, through the chair to you, councillor Hallerew. So, when the, um, oh.
All right, my apologies. So, did the three months, uh, start at the time that they were hired, or was it retroactively, uh, with the first, with the beginning of the investigation they're currently on?
Uh, through the chair to you, councillor Hallerew. Uh, so if I understand your question correctly, it would have been from the time the contract was signed with John Mascaren and his team. Uh, so I believe the appointment goes until about September twenty third, off the top of my head. Um, any investigation, what was assumed by John Mascaren, uh, would be started fresh because they can't pick up any work that was done by the previous integrity commissioner.
And so our approval was for three months, and the understanding was within three months we would put out a call to replace them?
Again, through the chair to you. Uh, at the time, staff had thought that three months would be sufficient to finalize, uh, anything that was ongoing. Unfortunately, that, you know, calculation has proved to be wrong on my end, and so we're just seeking an additional three months. Uh, I'm pretty confident that anything that's outstanding will be wrapped up by that point, and then we can look at more permanent solutions and propose that to council.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, it's staff recommendation, not that they are asking for an additional three months?
Uh, through the chair to you. That's correct. Um, didn't want to make any final decisions with anything outstanding. Uh, it didn't seem responsible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions of the report? Seeing none. Councillor Bowman, you have a motion?
Thank you, deputy mayor. Moved by myself, councillor Bowman, that the council for the corporation of the town of Ingersoll receive staff report C dash zero two three dash two four as information, and that council approve a three-month extension of John Mascaren as the town of Ingersoll integrity commissioner and closed-session investigator. And further that, staff be directed to report back to council with a recommendation for the appointment of a permanent integrity commissioner and closed-meeting investigator upon the completion of the ongoing review process. And councillor Hallerew, based on your comments, are you still willing to second this motion?
I'll second that.
Can we have a seconder?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bowman. Any comments or debate on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
We will now head to, uh, item T dash zero one six dash two four, compensation review. Mr. Graves, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this report really speaks for itself in providing the answers as to how we would implement the recommendations of Mary Ann Love in regards to staff pay equity and market review. Uh, but myself and Irina are available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much. Questions of the report? Councillor Hughes, please.
Thank you. Um, through you to, remember, at the last council meeting when this was all presented, um, was the consultant only going to come back with information and different comparators for council's, uh, review duration, or was that going to be on the full aspect of the, of the market review for, uh, pay?
Yes, that, uh, council did request different comparators for the council pay, and, uh,
Mary Ann Love has been working on those different comparators. We actually did receive those, uh, right at the end of last week, so they'll be coming to you at a subsequent meeting or potentially during budget time because those meetings are going to now be close if Irina's schedule gets adopted later. So, uh, uh, but we do have those numbers, but it was in relation to the council pay.
Do you have a follow-up councillor Hughes?
Yes, I do. Um, so would it, and, and I know all this information is here. Uh, I read there, uh, turned my trousers on the weekend. Um, it's, so it's, it's, it's just basically what we're doing is just bringing everybody's pay up to what is equal, uh, throughout different municipalities, throughout the comparator areas, correct?
Mr. Graves?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, and then we're doing this every two years, uh, looking at it, or are we doing it every four years from forward?
Mr. Graves?
If I could, it'd be our recommendation that we continue to do it every four years from this point forward. That's becoming an industry norm, and that's good. Uh, it also dovetails with the council cycle of, uh, elections, as well as your strategic plan. If you do a new strategic plan after every election, then you'll sort of know where you're at, uh, in your second year of your term and can implement, uh, you know, part of your strategy may be how to encourage more employees, and you can implement your pay equity market review according to your strategic plan, so that works well in that time period. If you go to any other cycle, you're out of whack of your sort of four-year cycle.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yeah. Uh, I have a question. I'll drag that towards, uh, Mr. Graves, is that, uh, there is two options that are available, uh, to council here that have been presented. Uh, one is for, to do this October, uh, October first of this year, and the other is just to, uh, start at twenty twenty five. Could you provide some, maybe some background of operational issues that you've, like, that, why that, maybe that's for, second option is there?
Yeah. Uh, and you can see H R has assisted Irina in putting in some detail. Uh, we've seen in the last little while some examples of where we've tried to do some hiring and we were competing with other municipalities and we were not up to schedule. Council, some council, where recall that in the last market review, we took a couple of years to implement, but that contributed to us being further behind now. Uh, so that's another reason why we'd like to implement sort of sooner rather than later. As well, we're facing the issues of minimum wage increasing later on this year, which our bottom end of our pay scale is already bumping up against that. We've been able to adjust temporarily to get around that issue, uh, but not, uh, it's becoming more difficult as minimum wage continues, and that has effects all the way up the grid. So, we're, uh, suggesting really option two is viable in our current, uh, our, our resolution of how to resolve that, and, uh, so we're recommending that, uh, option one and, or sorry, two would include one, but, uh, recommending approval.
Thank you. Uh, further questions of the report? Seeing none. Councillor Hallerew, do you have a resolution or motion, sorry?
Uh, I know I wasn't here in the last meeting when this was discussed, and I just wanted to add a few words before I move it. Um, it is understandable that, um, this review has happened. Um, I remember in the last review for staff, we were promised that it's a four-year cycle, and I just want people to understand that it is impactful on any budget. If you wait too long before you implement any change, and it doesn't have to be just specifically this. So I think, looking at the report, I'm definitely in favor of option two, which is more light for our budget and more light for our finances. So, basically, that allows us to not be too lagged behind where at one point in time it does become too much for a budget. So I think for option two, I will move. By myself, seconded by councillor Van Cooten-Bossens, that the council of the corporation of the town of Ingersoll receive staff report T dash zero one six dash two four, which, uh, be received as information, and that council direct staff to move forward with the sixtieth potential increase to non-union base salaries of the town of Ingersoll is identified in the twenty twenty four compensation review report, and that council direct staff to move forward with option two with an implementation date of October first, uh, for the increase of the non, to non-union base salaries.
Thank you very much. Discussion. I'm certainly in favor of, of the direction that's been chosen. I think that, uh, we have to remember that, uh, if we want our, our items to be implemented by staff, we need good staffing for this, and then we really need to provide staffing with the tools, uh, to be able to attract the, the most qualified staff. And, uh, certainly, when it came to council, uh, pay, we need to be more compared to, like municipalities, but with staff, uh, especially the staff that we have, I know that they can go in other places, larger markets, uh, and be successful applicants. So we need to be comparable to those to make sure that we, uh, are keeping sure that our, our staff are, uh, felt welcome here and making sure that they can have that, uh, be competitive to make sure that we can attract them, but also retain them, uh, to do the great work that they do, because at the end of the day, they do, do all the great work for us. So, um, certainly want to make sure that we're right in line where we need to be and that people are being compensated adequately. Further discussion? Deputy Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Um, I'm also supportive of the, the motion to recommend option two. I think we have a, we have an asset management plan that takes care of our capital assets, and I see this as very similar. We can't deliver any of the services, and we certainly can't deliver them well if we don't invest in the people that help us deliver those services. So I think option two is the responsible thing to do to make sure we can deliver to the residents what we've committed to deliver.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And that will take us down to, uh, report number five, which is T dash zero one seven dash two four, operating budget variance. Mr. Graves?
Thank you. I'm going to turn this one directly over to Irina, so, thank you.
Thank you. So the, um, the report analyzing the second quarter of two thousand twenty four budget to, um, actuals presented before council, it indicates that we are, and as of June thirty of two thousand twenty four, indicating a net surplus of six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. The report outlines some of the more notable, more significant variances, uh, but it also contains, uh, an attachment that provides more detailed analysis for each department. So if council has any questions or concerns, I will be more than happy to address them.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the report? Seeing none. Councillor Van Cooten-Bossens, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Wilson, that the council of the corporation of the town of Ingersoll receive staff report T dash zero one seven dash two four as information.
Thank you very much. Discussion. I think that's, uh, a good news story right now. We'll see how it plays out for the rest of the year, and hopefully that trend continues, but right now it's, uh, it's always, it's always positive to, uh, hopefully be not the other way as opposed to in the surplus. For discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we'll move on to our final staff report, which is the twenty twenty five budget public meeting schedule, T dash zero one eight dash two four. Mr. Graves? Mr. Graves?
Thank you. Our good treasurer tells me that we have to have budget meetings, and so I'm going to turn this report over to her and recommend times for that, so.
Thank you. So the report before council outlines the annual update process for our first multi-year budget, 2024, 2027, as required by the municipal act. It also presents a proposed schedule for the 2025, 2027 budget update. Last year, the town adopted the first multi-year budget. We adopted this approach as permitted by the municipal act. So now every year, we will have, not every year, for the remaining three years, council will have to re-adopt and update the budgets as required again by the municipal act. So for the 2025 budget year, which is second year of our multi-year budget, this update is required. So for the 2025 year, council will review and hopefully approve the budgets for 2025, 2026, and 2027. So that's the process. We, so the report also presents a schedule. So as opposed to last year, staff is proposing to hold three budget meetings, not four. So will be one meeting in October, second in November, and the last meeting in December, hopefully will be our final when council will approve the multi-year budget. So the meetings are proposed to be held on Mondays, and I understand that council may have very busy schedules, so we, staff is open for changes and suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the report? Counselor Hughes?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. So what was the reasoning for dropping back to three meetings as opposed to four?
As I indicated, council and staff has done a lot of work last year to adopt the four-year budget, so the next two years are, staff is of opinion, they don't require as much time to actually update the approved budgets for the next three years. So we believe it is sufficient. We can do it in three meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Halleru, and then Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
I just wanted to say, I commend you for bringing it up right now because it allows us to kind of start to think about those things. Some of us may think we have that much time to put in this year, but because we already have a multi-year planning going, it's really nice to have that indication that we should think about things that we need right now and not have any reason to delay. So thank you for bringing this up at this time.
I just want to say thank you. You have made my day by sticking with Mondays because that's the day that we set aside. And I think in 18 years is the first time that we've looked at a budget in October. I can't remember a time when we're this, this early, and so I commend you for that. And I know that that means staff is working even harder, and so I thank all the staff for doing what they're doing to make sure that everything's ready to go for us at the end of October. So it's great. I, you know what? We won't lose all of our, all of our December in meetings, which, you know what? Thank you. That means a lot to families of ours as well because we're here then every Monday night, so are you guys, and so I think this is a great, great thing that you've brought forward, so thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none. Deputy Mayor Wilson?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hudson, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll receives staff report T dash 018 dash 24 as information, and that council approves the 2025 to 2027 budget timeline.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We'll now go down to correspondence and resolution, please. Counselor Bowman, request from ISAN flag request, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Halleru, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received the flag request from the Indigenous Solidarity and Awareness Network, ISAN, as information, and that council approve ISAN's request for the Every Child Matters flag to be raised from September 27th to October 4th in Dewan Park to honor the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Counselor Halleru, please.
Yeah, just to add to the fact that this is very significant for Ingersoll. Not every community has been having, you know, the September 30th is now a staple for Ingersoll, and I think a lot of indigenous people are really appreciative of that, and I feel like we're really a step ahead in trying to make sure that we're truly receiving the message and honoring what is so dear to them. And I think it's in the spirit of unity and reconciliation. Thank you for approving this.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we will move on to TVDSB correspondence. Counselor Halleru.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Moved by myself, Counselor Halleru, seconded by Council of Accutin-Bossens, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received the request for support from the Thames Valley District School Board as information, and that council directs staff to a formal letter of support for a new elementary school and associated childcare center in Ingersoll for the Thames Valley District School Board to include their business case submission to the Ministry of Education.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Counselor Halleru.
Yeah, this, this is exciting because I know when we went for a delegation at Roma in January was part of our discussions with the minister, and I feel like having just the thought in my head that there is a school along, a school, new school in Ingersoll, and then we have other cases for childcare along with it, is an amazing, amazing opportunity to resolve all the issues of childcare and also an extra school needed as our community grows. So this is exciting, and we should applaud this.
Absolutely. Further discussion? I'll just add that, again, we went to AMO this year and in Ottawa, and I have to say that I'm extremely impressed, not only with the school board, but also with the representation. The, the chair of the board traveled to AMO to help us in a delegation on their own dime. They were not reimbursed by the board. That's how much they cared about making sure that this was something that was, the need with this was explained to the minister, ministry, and so that was very appreciative, both in our delegation, but also in the township of Zora's delegation. And so Mayor Ryan and myself have penned a letter to the, the board requesting that the board reimburse the chair for their expenses and outlining how effective that was for them to be there, to be able to speak about the need for this facility from an education standpoint. That was, that was something that was, would win and loss without that. So I can't express enough thanks to our representatives, both David Crips and Leanne Hopkins, and the staff for being very collaborative, and I think we're going to see amazing things happen because of that, and everybody's going to benefit. So certainly in support of this. Yeah, it's, it's good news when we all work together.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, OWIN's 30th anniversary event.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wilson, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received the correspondence from Oxford Women in Networking as information, and that council support the Oxford Women in Networking's Owen 30th anniversary event on September 26, 2024 by providing, sorry, by providing a $750 event sponsorship to be drawn from the council promotion budget.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Sorry, Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
I think that supporting the Owen request is, is something that our council should be doing. They, it's a 30th anniversary. It is taking place in our own community, which I think is great, and if there's any of us who are available to attend, I think that going would probably be a great idea. So that's why I put forward the amount in the motion that I did, so thank you.
Counselor Halleru, please.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely concur. I have been a member of Owen for eight years, and I'll tell you right now, this is the only reason why businesses across Oxford County meet, get to know each other, and I think personally that really allowed me to bloom in Oxford County. We have meetings at Ingersoll's beautiful, you know, brain fart. We have it at our, Ingersoll, Almhurst, every, every year. I mean, we have breakfast once a month in Tilsenberg, Ingersoll, and prior to COVID, and so we definitely feel a part of Ingersoll in our celebrations. And again, it's been hosted in Ingersoll, so I think it's only fair, and it shows that support, and I appreciate that.
Excellent. No, I have no problem supporting this, just on one account that I will not be available to attend to speak on behalf of the, so I would certainly ask Deputy Mayor Wilson, if you're available, to mark your calendar down because I think that would be fitting to have women representation, for sure, as well. So certainly has my support on that. Again, anytime a group can get together and have discussions and, and build the knowledge, it's just, it's just, it's a good thing. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
And now Deputy Mayor Wilson, food truck permit request, please.
Thank you, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hudson, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received the correspondence from Daniel Dustine, manager-owner of PB's French Fries as information, and that council approved the request to park the PB's fried food truck on a municipal road for a private event to be held on September 21st, 2024, conditional on the applicant obtaining a special event permit through the town.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Well, I'll ask for a motion for recess. We have exhausted all the business that we can until 7:00 PM, so if we could have a motion to reconvene at 7:00 PM. Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wilson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? We are recessed. Thank you.[1326.76]
that we can until 7:00 PM. So if we could have a motion to reconvene at 7:00 PM. Counselor Van Trutten-Bossens, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wilson. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We are recessed. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I will now reconvene the September 9th regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, and we will go into a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act. And I will declare the public meeting to be open. This meeting is being constituted as a public meeting held under the Planning Act to consider proposed amendments to Consolidated Zoning Bylaw 04-4160. Any person in attendance, including those participating virtually, may make a presentation to council in support or opposition to the zone change applications. Individuals who wish to receive the decision of council on any application being considered this evening must sign the record of attendance outside the council chambers or submit a written request to the attention of the town clerk Danielle Richard at Danielle Richard, sorry, Danielle dot Richard at Ingersoll dot C A. The Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal under subsection 25 if an appellant has not provided council with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaw is passed under this section. The application to be heard this evening concerns application ZN 6-23-05, 115, and 117 Merritt Street, Gruel, Blair. Does any member of council have a conflict of interest on the application to be considered? Seeing none, has the clerk received any additional correspondence on the application that is not being noted on the agenda?
I have not.
Thank you. I want to ask the planner, Justin Miller, to provide an overview of the application and an explanation of the requested zoning amendment, please.
Good evening, council staff and members of the public. As the mayor mentioned, this is application for zone change ZN 62305 in the name of Gruel. The application for zone change proposes to rezone the subject lands from residential type 2, R2, to special residential type 3, R3, with this special provision, to facilitate the conversion of an existing duplex to multiple unit residential building containing four dwelling units. Specifically, the application proposes the creation of two new dwelling units in the basement of the existing duplex. The subject lands are described as Lot 15, Block 9, Plan 279 in the Town of Ingersoll. The lands are located on the east side of Merritt Street, lying between Charles Street West and King Street West, and are municipally known as 115 and 117 Merritt Street. The subject lands are designated low density residential in the official plan and are currently zoned R2 in the Town of Ingersoll. Zoning by law in the, in the, the request happens to be rezoned to R3 Special in the Town of Ingersoll. An application for zone change has been received to rezone the subject lands to permit the conversion of an existing semi-attached dwelling arranged front to back into a multiple unit dwelling containing four units. It's proposed that the two new basement units would be added to the existing structure on the subject land, which contains the existing semi-attached dwellings, as well as an attached two-car garage. The site plan submitted by the applicant shows four additional parking spaces on the subject land for a total of six parking spaces proposed. The dwelling on the subject lands was originally constructed as a single detached dwelling in approximately 1939, and a permit was issued in 1995 for the second dwelling, which was attached at the rear with an attached garage. The subject property is located within the low density residential designation according to the Town of Ingersoll Residential Density Plan as contained in the official plan. Low density residential areas include those lands that are primarily, primarily developed or planned for a variety of low-rise, low-density housing forms, including single attached dwellings, semi-attached dwellings, duplexes, converted dwellings, quadruplexes, townhouses, and low-density cluster development. In these districts, it's intended that there will be a mixing and integration of different forms of housing to achieve an overall low density of use. Section 9.2.4.3 Converted Dwellings provides that within a low-density residential designation, town council may zone areas to permit detached, semi-detached, and townhouse dwellings to be converted into two residential units, and town council may zone areas within the town to permit conversion up to four dwelling units per building, subject to a number of criteria. The zoning by law will further, will limit the number of units that may be contained in a converted dwelling and specify the minimum lot or dwelling size requirements for the conversion. To maintain the external character of the dwelling, the zoning by law may also limit the extent of the structural additions or changes that would be permitted. The applicant has, has, has submitted, has submitted to rezone the subject lands from R2 to R3 Special to permit the multiple unit dwelling consisting of four dwelling units. Parking requirements for multiple unit dwellings are 1.5 spaces per unit, which would result in six spaces for the proposed units plus one barrier free. Based on the attached sketch provided, the applicant, by the applicant, a special provision would be required to recognize the existing front and rear yard depths, as well as the interior side yard width to the existing structure. The site sketch submitted by the applicant shows sufficient area to accommodate the required parking, including two spaces in the attached garage. The above noted information is provided to council, for council's information. A subsequent report, including comments received via agency circulation, a summary of public input, and a planning staff recommendation will be provided at a later council meeting.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant or the representative have any comments to make concerning the application?
No, I think that covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open this meeting to the comments from the public. This portion of the meeting provides the opportunity for individuals to speak to the application and have their comments considered by the planner and council before a report and recommendation on the requested zoning amendment is brought forward for a decision at a subsequent council meeting. Any person from the audience who wishes to provide comments and support or opposition to the application may do so now by coming forward to the lectern and stating their name and address for the public record. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the application? Seeing none, members of council now the opportunity to ask any questions about the application. However, they, they have, may not offer any comments at this time. Are there any questions of council about this application? Counselor Yuse, please.
Thank you. Through the mayor to Justin. Did I hear you correctly saying that the minimum requirement is one and a half parking spots per dwelling with inclusion of a barrier-free parking spot?
Through the mayor, that's correct. So it's one and a half spaces per unit plus in addition to that one barrier-free parking spot.
So the, in the, in the drawing, there is no designation for that barrier-free parking spot. Is this an older, an older drawing? Is there going to be anyone submit?
So through the mayor. I don't know that it's an older drawing. The planner in her report indicated that there is space for that spot to be created on the subject lands, but that it likely, I don't, I don't believe it is shown, but she indicated through, through consultation with building and planning that there is space to create that space. And that parking in this case can be tandem, so there's definitely space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none. If there are no further comments or questions, then the public for, meeting for this application is now concluded. The application will be scheduled to come before council, a subsequent meeting during which the planners' report and recommendation will be considered. As a reminder, if any member of the audience wishes to be notified the decision of council in respect of any zoning by law amendments, they must submit a written request to the town clerk Danielle Richard at Danielle dot Richard at Ingersoll dot C A. The clerk must provide notice of council's decision to all those who request a copy within 15 days after the day the bylaw is passed. The Planning Act provides for an appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal for a decision made by the Town of Ingersoll within 20 days of the issuing of a notice of decision. Only specified persons, public bodies, registered owners of the land to which the plan may apply to request her to amend the plan, and the minister may appeal the decision of the town to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Excluding the minister, any party wishing to make an appeal must have made written or oral submissions to council at a public meeting. Please note that third parties, anyone who is not a specified person or body, do not have the right to appeal a decision for the zone change amendment to the Ontario Land Tribunal, which is a recent change. So with that, we will now move on to, oh, sorry, we do have a motion by Counselor Hudson to receive the planning report. to receive the planning report, please.
Thank you. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Bowman, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll receive planning report number CP 2024-292 as information.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll now move on to the delegations and presentations. I thank everybody for coming out this evening. So our first presentation will be Mike Barrett for the health strategy. Just before we get going, I will ask that this is not a public meeting. We want to be respectful of all speakers, so if we refrain from any cheering or jeering of all speakers, that would be appreciative. We want to be respectful, make sure everybody feels comfortable speaking. It's not easy getting up in front of everybody to talk, so I appreciate that in advance. And, sure, and Mr. Graves, would you like to introduce Mr. Barrett, please?
Certainly. One of the goals of the council's strategic plan was to create a health strategy. In order to help us develop that strategy, we've sought the assistance of Michael Barrett. Michael brings extensive experience as a former hospital president, CAO as well, CEO as well as CEO of the Southwestern, Southwest LIN, Local Health Integration Network, LIN. His connection to the town runs deep, though, because he began his career here in Ingersoll as a planner. Michael is here to present his initial findings in the health review toward an eventual, eventual fulsome health strategy. Thank you, Michael, for being here.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me? So it is great to be back in Ingersoll. I started my career here as a county planner, just like Justin, 25 years ago, and was presented many times in this council chambers. And after that, I did move on and did a bit more health work, so you'll hear a bit about that. But here today to talk about the health strategy for the town of Ingersoll. And I think, there we go. I think all of council knows and the public knows that any strong, vibrant community needs a strong healthcare system. And the town of Ingersoll has embarked on this process to create a health strategy because residents, businesses, industries expect a strong healthcare system. So when industry comes to town, they want to make sure that the healthcare system is functional, it's working well. And the town, it wants a strong healthcare system as well. So that's been communicated clearly to me by the mayor and by Michael, the CAO. So that's why they brought me on to help with the development of this health strategy. And for municipalities, upper-tier municipalities, health is pretty clear, so they have responsibilities for EMS, for long-term care, for public health. But for lower-tier municipalities, it's often unclear what their role is for the municipality to take, to undertake. So that's why the municipality is asking me to come in and assist with this work. And we're, I'm going to be assisting the town in the development of this health strategy. So the, the health strategy is intended to outline the directions and actions which can be undertaken to support the healthcare services that are in the town right now. And you'll, and you'll hear from me in a sec just about the information that I've got back from those agencies. And as I've said already, the, the town wants to ensure that Ingersoll is supported by a strong healthcare system. One really important point is that the town also understands that the, the healthcare system doesn't stop and start at the boundary of the town of Ingersoll. The healthcare system is a provincial system, in many ways a Canadian system. So the work that's being done here is not being done in isolation of just Ingersoll. It impacts all of Oxford County municipalities, the other seven municipalities, as well as the surrounding region. The work that I've been asked to do has been broken down into two stages. And those two stages, and it was the suggestion of Michael Graves, the CAO, to take this approach, as opposed to jumping into the recommendations right off the bat, to do a status report. And so the status report's been circulated to town council members, they've seen it. And I'll talk a bit about that in terms of what it, what it describes. But this, the status report really describes the lay of the land for the healthcare system here in the town, what services are available, what may be changing, and what may be missing in terms of, in terms of healthcare services. The second stage, so that, the status report is complete now. The second stage, stage two, is actually the strategy report and the development of the recommendations. And the best status, or the strategy report with the recommendations would utilize the data and information that's in the status report to develop those recommendations for town council. To assist in this work of the, the status report, I interviewed 19 different stakeholders. And so those stakeholders are identified in one of the appendices of the report. But there was 27 participants in total. You can see the list there of people that were interviewed, everyone from hospitals to long-term care, the Ontario Health Team, which is the new planning organization within, within the Ontario healthcare system, Ingersoll physicians, Secord Trails, the long-term care home here, the county long-term care home director, as well as the Ingersoll Chamber of Commerce. So the Ingersoll Chamber of Commerce, we met with them, and really good feedback that they provide in terms of wanting to assist not only the town, but all the businesses and industries to create a strong healthcare system. And one important point for me, I guess, was that a draft of that status report has been circulated back to all those stakeholders. So they've had a chance to see it, verify that the information is correct. Got lots of great feedback. They said, you know, some changes they suggested, some additional information. So that's been included in the final report that council has in front of them. So some of the findings, and I won't go into a lot of detail tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions about the, the report itself. I guess the first one is that you have a strong collection of committed healthcare organizations in the town. So everyone cares deeply about the residents that they serve here. They care about their organizations, and those organizations are providing high-level service to the, to the residents of the town and to the municipality. The report provides a high-level overview of all the different health service agencies. So there's actually an appendancy in the report, talks about what services are provided by the hospital, by long-term care, by community mental health and addictions, by the nurse-practitioner-led clinic. So lots of good information there to, that the council can review and other members of the public can review as well. The report also contains a number of provincial issues. And some of the key ones right now, and you've probably heard this in the media, health human resource shortages. So there's shortages of physicians, shortages of nurses. And another really prominent finding, it's not a finding, it's out there in the open right now, is that the age of physicians within the town of Ingersoll and within the county of Oxford is older than the provincial average. So you've got a physician group that's older, which means they're closer to retirement, which means that you need to look at how do you replenish and replenish and replace those physicians as they, they move to that, that stage of their career. So this is a really condensed list of the findings. As I said, there's lots more information within the report. I'll just go quickly through each of the, the service areas. So some of the findings from the hospital perspective, I think the council's aware and the community's aware that the Tilsonburg and Ingersoll hospitals are going through a formal integration process, coming together. They're undertaking a clinical services planning review. And that clinical services planning review is fancy language for saying, what type of services should we provide within each of the hospitals, within Ingersoll and Tilsonburg? So it's really important that the municipality stays connected to that work, because you want to know the services that are going to be in the hospital. The hospital wants to know what services and population growth is going to happen within, within the municipality. So some great, it's a great time to be involved with that, that work. Long-term care, long-term care, the demand for long-term care home beds in the county of Oxford and the town of Ingersoll is very high. There's information within the report that shows the demand, people's on the waitlist. The county has made an application for 160-bed, new long-term care home within the town of Ingersoll. So that's in addition to Woodingford Lodge, which is 34 beds, and the Sienna Home, Secord Trails Community Care, which is 80, 80 beds. So that application for the additional 160 beds has been received by the ministry, but there's no response back yet. A key issue with any new construction for long-term care home beds, the province does provide funding for it, but the amount of funding that's provided for new long-term care home beds doesn't meet the actual construction costs that, whether it's the county or a private, private home, are actually going to incur in building those beds. So there's a difference there that's going to have to be rectified. Nurse practitioner-led clinic. So Ingersoll's very lucky. You have one of 26 nurse practitioner-led clinics across the province. And there's a real, a great opportunity to expand that nurse practitioner-led clinic, which provide more primary care to the people of the, of the town of Ingersoll. So that's going to be a real, well, not telling council what to do, but should be a focus for moving into the, into the future. There's a real opportunity there for increasing primary care access. The Ontario Health Team is the new planning organization for, within the provincial government. There's one in each of the counties, so there's one for Oxford County. The one here in Oxford County is in the formative stage, so there's lots of opportunity for greater municipal involvement. And again, I'll come back to, it's important that the healthcare system knows what the town is doing in terms of new development, new services, new demands. And it's important for you to know what services are available within the healthcare system. So there's synergies there between the two. Physicians, more are needed within, within the town of Ingersoll. So I interviewed physicians from both of the physician groups within the, within the town. Space is an issue within the hospital. They're constrained in terms of space that they have available within the hospital setting. That, there's ways to resolve that. You can make changes within the hospital, you can create office space outside the hospital. So if we get to the recommendation stage, there's going to be lots of opportunity for the town to, to help lead some of that conversation. But there is a greater role for the town in recruitment and retention, because the town really needs to make it attractive for physicians and nurses to come here. And you're fighting with every other municipality across the province. So I've traveled wide and far over the last 30 years, and so many people, or so many municipalities are looking for the same thing that you are. So how do you make your differentiate, differentiate yourself from that? And then home care, there's ongoing structural changes within the home care setting. So you would have heard about the CCAC, then it became the LIN, then it became Home and Community Care Support Services, and now it's called Ontario Health at Home, which just happened in June. So all kinds of structural change. And I think there's lots of opportunities for improving the healthcare, improving the home care system within the province and certainly here in Oxford County. And again, that's just a snapshot of lots of other information that's captured within the report. So next steps. One of the steps that the town was very proactive in is meeting with the Minister of Health on August the 20th. So they met with the minister at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference this, just this August, and spoke about three things, the strategy, which is being discussed here, expansion of the nurse practitioner-led clinic, the one on King Street, which I referenced earlier, and then the integration of the Ingersoll and Tilsonburg hospitals. And this is, it's, it's important to recognize that many municipalities would not see this as something as a priority for them when they spoke to their provincial counterparts. They'd be talking roads, recreation, other things that are vitally important to municipalities. But Ingersoll took it upon them to make sure that health was a focus. So they, I give marks to the town for being very proactive in, in this work. So recommendations, as I've said a couple of times, will come in phase two. Some of the key ones are town input into health planning, advocacy. So if there's going to be an expansion of a service or a change in service, whether it's new long-term care home beds or expansion of the nurse practitioner-led clinic, the municipality needs to be side by side with those folks when they go to advocate for that work. Support for the health service agencies that are within the town right now, physician recruitment and retention. And there's also opportunities for, if long-term care home beds were to come to the town of Ingersoll, you'd have to build a new facility. You could have collaborative space or common space for physicians, municipal work, social services, to be all in one center. Nurse practitioner-led clinic could be in there as well. So again, it's the municipality can play a large role there that would be helpful to, to do that work. And then finally, if town council wants to proceed to that phase two to create the health strategy and recommendations, then we can talk about how that, that looks. And you can see where some of these recommendations are already headed from my conversation tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other questions from council? Councillor Hallerud, please.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. I want to thank you for the work that you've done. It's very comprehensive. Some of the concerns that I had in the beginning were, we had a physician recruitment committee, and we weren't sure where we were going with it. And I'm very glad to see that you have them as stakeholders. You've, you've definitely done that due diligence. Because I do believe that when we talk about what affects our immediate hospitals and care facilities, that the people actually still have a voice. And when you talk about continuous integration work and, you know, collaboration, I think the maintenance of that should still fall to the committee as an ongoing service that they offer the town. Question I have is, in the creating the health strategy and the recommendations, does that fall back to the committee as you continue to work? Or is that going to be something totally separate? I do commend that we have a strategy in place now, but I would like to know, because when you talk about recruitment for physicians, there's suggestions that, I know that I've had conversations with Nadia in the past, things like even incentivizing student placements when you talk about attracting new doctors or young doctors, talking about primary caregivers that are now small businesses coming into the community, how do we talk about that? So at what point do we integrate that with a committee that is doing the ongoing work and having this as a recommendation coming from your services?
I'm just going to turn that to Mr. Graves first.
Yeah, I, I think we don't fully know what the recommendations will be, but there'll probably be some component of physician recruitment. And, and out of those recommendations, it will probably be both council staff and also the committee to be involved in physician recruitment in some capacity. But not knowing what those full recommendations are, it's a bit difficult to crystal ball exactly how that will shake out, but there likely will be a role for the committee in, in some sort of physician recruitment.
Further questions of the presentation? Thank you very much. I will just touch on the AMO delegation that was held, because it may affect the resolution The minister was gracious to grant this delegation. That's a rare, rare item, because the minister is, Minister Health is obviously very busy and very sought after at these events. There's only so many spots available. So it was, it was seen as a good sign that the minister was, the minister themselves was at the, at the meeting, knew a lot about the nurse practitioner-led clinic, knew about the application to expand it, so that was seen as a positive. Certainly, we advocated on behalf of how much that is a benefit within the community. Also, they were very interested in the, the strategic approach that we were taking. And so one of the things we did offer up is that we would forward our strategic, our strategy to them for review. So that would be the request, and if the motion's coming forward, that, that's part of it, that we do send the strategy, even the, the update to them at this point, to keep them abreast of what we're doing. And hopefully, they'll provide feedback on that as well, that would be helpful. So it was a very positive meeting, and certainly it was, it was nice to be able to advocate upon the greater needs of the community with a minister that was willing to listen. So that was, that was good. Further, councillor Hallerud, please.
Yeah, I just wondered if you could still answer a bit for me on the, when you say the all Ontario Health home care has been legislated differently, does that account for those small businesses that we see coming up and wanting to offer private home care, for example?
Mr. Barrett, through to councillor Hallerud. So they, right now, the, the way the Ontario home care system works is you have the central agency, which is, was the CCAC, the LIN, and now is called Ontario Health at Home. They contract with service provider organizations. So that would be St. Elizabeth Care, VON, different organizations across the province. For a new organization to come in, they'd have to be approved as one of those service provider organizations. And I think from my perspective, I think the chances that are probably highly unlikely. The province has really stuck with the, the existing service provider organizations that have been around for many, many years. And it was, this is going back 15 years ago, there was supposed to be a competitive process for new organizations to come in. And if you remember the, remember the history, VON was one of the service provider organizations that lost business. And they, it was a big change, and the province said, no, we're going to stick with the organizations that we've got. So to simply answer your question, private organizations can still provide care to providers, but having it funded by the government through Ontario Health at Home, I think is going to be unlikely.
Councillor Van Koomen, Boston.
So just so that you're aware, the Ingersoll Services for Seniors is one of those health service providers. So within our community, yes, there's VON, it's out of Woodstock. The Tilsonburg has their Tilsonburg Multi-Use Center, and Ingersoll Services for Seniors is one of the ones that can go in. We do receive government funding that way, so we're, we do have something here in Ingersoll and, and looking always to get more funding through that Ontario Health at Home and, and being able to have more funding, so, yeah.
Further questions? Seeing none, councillor Bowman, please. You have a, a motion.
All right, just in a second. Mayor? Absolutely. While you're doing that, I'll thank Mr. Barrett again for the work and the time this evening. It was a very comprehensive report, and certainly, I know I, I learned something about my community through it, and I've had I learned something about my community through it. And I've had some conversation with some other area leaders who have as well. So it's.
Great. Thank you.
Wanted to have captured in this. Moved by myself, Council Bowman, the Council for the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received Mike Barrett's delegation regarding the Town of Ingersoll's health strategy as information. And further that, the Town of Ingersoll forward our updated healthcare strategy to the ministry for their review and reference. And further that, a report of the progress on phase two be brought back to council for review.
Council Halorid.
One second.
Excellent. We have a motion moved. And second is a discussion on the motion. If you say have full support of that, I think that this is the right direction to go in. We go in with full knowledge and knowing how to affect change, I think we'll be more successful than just trying to sometimes do what everybody else did. And sometimes it's just throwing money at it. And that's going to be, that's going to be a part of this. But where to put that money and how much is important. And I think that's what we're going to find out in this. It's a very important topic. We hear about it all the time, about our healthcare system, and we need to be strong in our community. And certainly, again, going through the process, learning about it, and what we need and how we can change is the best way that we're going to have a good outcome. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. I will now call upon our next delegation, Darryl Hall, Dave Alch, and Evan McHugh, Insulation of Storm Sewers, Storm and Sanitary Sewers, please. Glad to come up to Lectern, please. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Darryl Hall, and I live at, with my family at 438 King Street West. And I'm also joined by, as already stated, Dave Alch and Evan McHugh. Understanding we have 10 minutes for delegation, we've provided a deck for review, but we're going to skip ahead to the most important pieces. And we hope that there'll be questions and comments at the end. Before I hand it over, I think you can see by the attendance in person and remote how important this issue is and how concerned we are with the initial communication that we've received from Oxford County.
Councilors, staff, neighbors, great to see you all. The issue we have in front of us today is, is a very simple one. On May 27, 2024, we as residents of King Street West and Hamilton Road received a letter from Oxford County requesting mandatory payments for the new sewer connection for the ongoing development up the street. The county actually estimates that infrastructure cost to be around $17,646 with, and if with those mandatory hookup costs, there's actually going to be another $15,000 for the individual homes to be able to connect to that sewer. Combined, households are actually going to be required to pay around $32,646 for services that we currently don't really need or want in that area, and something that had just been added to the forthcoming plans because of the new development addition that is going to be taken just along the street there. Darryl?
Thanks. So as residents of Ingersoll, we understand and support the need for housing development and the housing shortage that's happening across the province. However, we believe that the proposed changes will have a significant negative impact on residents. It could also produce undue burden on homeowners who are looking to renovate or sell their homes. I'm sure you all would agree that the current economic environment is such that mortgage delinquencies and non-mortgage debt has doubled since the pre-pandemic levels. And consumer debt has risen to $2.46 trillion at the end of the first quarter of 2024. That marks a 3.5% increase. So again, this is coming at the wrong time in the wrong amount.
Well, I have talked to almost everybody out here. A lot of them cannot, they're struggling right now. Let's put this burden on them over something that we didn't ask for and don't need. Everything we have is working fine. And people who are considering selling, there's three just recently went up. And I don't know exactly how many houses is there. If there's 50, that's 6% just went for sale in the last two weeks. And furthermore, the infrastructure products now for the wastewater, you know, you've done some streets in Ingersoll. I got out today, and I talked to a gentleman on Ragland Street, just finishing that road now. Didn't cost him anything to get that whole street. His portion was zero. And if they wanted out our way, our portion should be zero as well.
So we want to bring to, oh, I'm not clicking the thing, sorry. So we just wanted to bring to your attention that a number of municipalities, Hamilton, Milton, Belleville, have actually already changed their bylaws to allow residents to connect to these services when they actually need them, rather than making a mandatory payment that is forced upon the individual residents. We've actually forwarded a Belleville council meeting video as an example of what the amendments have taken place, just to give you guys an idea. And this seems like a reasonable compromise to us, basically an opt-in option for the residents on the street when they need the services, either through a sale, or when it becomes time for them to connect when their existing system is no longer going to function adequately.
We've done a lot of this, you can tell. And one other thing, in 1999, we're speaking cartridge, done a development out by the 401, come down Wallace Line, hooked into Thomas Street, he put his own sewer line in and paid for it. The developer paid for it. Growth pays for growth.
So our recommendations are quite simple and are as followed. We would ask for a consistent approach to municipal residents and corporations regarding infrastructure and developmental charges. Like I said previously, we wanted to allow residents the opt-in model to connect a sewer when they need that service and actually require the hookups, or when they sell their homes. We would be asking to release a capacity analysis showing the different proposed scenarios, showing the proposed benefits of the work to the individual residents on our street, making traffic density reports available to residents illustrating the extra demands on a provincial overflow and emergency services access route. And we would just like to make the information publicly available regarding the net new revenue generated through the residential development to the city and the county. We understand that Ingersoll Council does not have authority over this matter, but we are asking our elected officials to support current residents by writing Oxford County in support of our recommendations. Your support would carry immense weight when we go forth to present these same facts to the, at the county level. And we just want to again thank you guys all for showing up. We thank you guys for hearing all our concerns, and we're open to any questions or comments you would have regarding what we presented here today.
Thank you. First, we'll start out by thank you for coming, and thank you for everybody for coming. This is what democracy is about, and it's important that everybody took the time of their day to show up to council chambers to, A, support these three gentlemen. It's not easy to get up and do a presentation, and also show them support for what's going on. Second of all, I do want to reiterate again, the council of the Town of Ingersoll does not have the ability to affect this. It is a county council decision. That being said, I am your representative on county council. I've heard from, I've heard from the letters that have come in, and I agree with you. The communication that went out with this was not right. And I've worked with Mayor, sorry, Warden Ryan and the county to try to rectify that and improve that going forward. That being said, there's a public meeting here tomorrow night from 4 till 6 p.m. As a result of that, to make sure that everybody does have the correct information, you can ask your questions and get answers for it. Whether it's this council, or that council, or any organization that I'm a part of, and I think that anybody around this table is a part of, is that we want people to have the correct information, that you can make a decision that's best for your family off of. The other thing I will mention on this is that, that's the first thing I'll say, is make sure that if you can or you can't come to the public meeting, that if you can, that's the best way. If you can't, make sure there's contact information there. There's a slide that's going to be presented there that's on the county's website as well. That's for information as well. I know there's a delegation Wednesday at county council as well. And so that's important. Again, I do want to reiterate, though, there is time. This is not happening tomorrow. The project's in design phase right now, construction minimum 2025 outwards. Then you have to, the construction has to be complete. So don't expect the bill or anything to happen. If you consider selling your house tomorrow, don't. Because there's a, there's a good two-year window there, one to two-year window there before anything's going to happen. So we have time to have discussions and have those, that input take place. And so we can make, the county can make the best decision possible at that level. So that input's important, but at the same time, there is time, and so we can have those conversations. But I do want to reiterate, there is absolute commitment, I'm sure, from every member of this council, but also county council and staff to make sure that residents do have the correct information so you can make decisions for your family about what's best there. And we'll, we'll continue to that process. It takes a little time, but we want to make sure everything's right and that you do have the best information. So I do really appreciate you coming out and advocating on your behalf. That's, you just heard about us going to the province and advocating. So we can, we want, we want the same feedback from that. So I will, I will be at the public meeting tomorrow night to listen, and then I'll also be at county council, obviously, to listen there as well. So hopefully, we have the same crowd out. I know it's during the day, it's not as easy to get out. But I can assure you that everybody at county council is aware of the issue, staff are aware of the issue, and they're, they're, they're trying to make sure that, A, we get you the correct information, that you need to make a decision, but also we have a better process going forward to make sure that information is put out in a timely, accurate manner. So that I can commit to. Further questions from Council Halorid, please.
Thank you, through your mayor. Can I get the first date that you received that letter?
May 27.
27.
May 27. It's the first time you ever heard of this, right?
Correct.
Okay. And second question to you, mayor. When it comes to matters that affect residents, and the county is way up, and we can't really directly influence them, and you sit at the table with them, if they come tomorrow, is that an opportunity for residents to hear also what you could possibly propose? Or is it just for us to listen again and just understand whether they break this down in another way, that it still ends up being meaning the same thing and being the same thing? Or is there an opportunity as council to work with you now to maybe devise a policy suggestion so county can consider a way that it affects Ingersoll differently? Because there is something to be said about the way that we can use policy to help our residents, and there's also something to be said about our representation being able to influence that decision at the county to fight for us to get something maybe done differently. So I'm just wondering, if tomorrow is a good start, that you have something that we could possibly present, or we're just going to listen?
Well, tomorrow is a public information session on the program, on the project, to be able to answer the questions that are available to be answered at this time. Part of the problem is, the $17,000 figure is the maximum. We don't know what the cost, they don't know what the cost is. And I think that's one of the biggest problems with what the letter came out was, that is, that's accurate in the fact that that is the maximum. But that is not the cost because the cost hasn't been calculated yet because the project's in design phase. So really, tomorrow is about getting that information. Staff can, staff will be there, the, all the members of the different groups that are working on this project will be there to be able to provide information and answer questions. And that's the biggest thing, is having that dialogue. And then we can tailor this going forward to see what's available. And I would want to make a commitment to a policy without having all the information and what the impact, the input back from the residents about that because it may not solve the issue. So I do commit to ongoing dialogue, but tomorrow is more about providing information that they know to date, so the residents have that. And to be honest, there is some information that will not be provided, will be able to be provided tomorrow because it's just not available yet because those decisions aren't there. So I hope that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, follow up to that. So if we agree that tomorrow is just maybe an explanation and a breakdown and not, perhaps we're not able to get all the information, at what point are we going to use this information that we just got? Like, we know what the residents are asking, perhaps as needed, updates when it's required by this few group of residents. Perhaps the development consider a specific point where if a resident wants to, they can, because they don't have a problem right now. Like, are those things relevant to what you could take to the county, or it's just for this deliberation and that's it?
Are you asking what council's role would be?
Yeah, like what, what you could use with this information, because you represent us at county. What impact will this presentation have for these residents when you go to the table? Because...
Well, certainly, that's, it's here tonight. I see the room full of people. I know the presentation's coming again on Wednesday at county council, which is, is going to be presented to the council that would make the decision. Personally, this is my personal opinion, and it's, we do have a Woodstock councillor in the room, so I'll use them as an example. Thank you for coming this evening, is that I don't, I wouldn't want Ingersoll council or Woodstock council telling, advising us on what we should do as a council. Because there is different jurisdictions, there's different things to take into consideration. I think, and that goes to, I think what Ingersoll council should do is make sure that if there is a way that staff can share information, that we can be a conduit for that to the residents. I understand that it's not always seen as Oxford County and Ingersoll, it's municipal government, they're just different services. But you get your tax bill from Ingersoll, and I get that, but there's Oxford County taxes on it. So we have, I know there's been a commitment to share through communications, and I think there's a role to play for us to do that, is make sure that we let staff know that we want that information to be shared through that. But at the end of the day, it is a decision of county council, and I don't want to, I don't want to step on another jurisdiction's area because I wouldn't want them stepping on our area as well, right? I wouldn't want county council coming to Ingersoll being, enact this policy. I think we need to respect that that's where that is. But there's absolutely no problem with wanting to make sure that that information is shared freely.
Sorry. I think I'm not able to communicate very well. As a rookie question, okay? I don't know how you're able to represent us on the county, but what I'm suggesting is, is there a way that when you go back to county, that we have something uniquely suggested on behalf of residents of Ingersoll? Is that possible or not possible?
Well, here's, here's the deal, here's the hard part. When I go to county council, I don't represent Ingersoll. I represent all the residents in Oxford County. And no matter what board that I've been on, I make sure I try to represent the people who are in it. When I go, when I'm the chair of UTRCA, I represent all the residents in the watershed, not just Ingersoll, not just Oxford County, all the residents in the watershed. So I will tell you right now that when I go to county council, I'm going to support a policy that is best for all of residents in Oxford County, because that's what I'm there to do as a representative from Ingersoll. And so what that, what that means is, I'm going to, I'm going to commit to, there could be a policy change here. I'm not saying there's not going to. It's not a hard line saying I'm never going to support it. But I need to fully understand the implications of a policy change before I would commit to that because that could be, that could adversely impact your taxes. It could, there's a lot of things that could go wrong here. Put it this way, if water goes bad and someone dies, I go to jail. So I take that very seriously. So those kind of decisions, I want to make sure that we're adequately funding the things that we need to do, and make sure that those things are taken care of because I want people to be safe, and I prefer freedom over being incarcerated.
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, if I can, we look to our elected officials to support our residents, whether it's you attending the council meeting. We're asking this council to propose a motion to support current residents, whether it's through you, Mr. Mayor, or through this council.
Council Halorid.
Thank you. And I kind of think that's what I understood, because when we have the opportunity to advocate for people, we have to find a way to be creative about it. I'll give you an example. I remember once upon a time, the Sears building, the old Sears building was not allowed to function because it was not part, it was not connected to the town sewer. Now, that was a building that could service a business or could house something, but was useless for so many years because of the simple fact, you have to connect to a sewer. Now, if I were in this position to advocate, I would say, we have buildings that are deteriorating because they're not in use, because of the simple fact, are they not allowed to function at least to an extent that we can... not allowed to function at least to a extent that we can enforce it something in the future? Maybe a proactive way of gradual, and all I'm saying is, we've heard layman language tonight, saying that we could advocate for perhaps not a robust, you know, forceful integration, but maybe as needed integration, or maybe something that phases into a little bit of payment, something. I don't, I don't understand if it's so hard to understand what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, are you not able to take that to county because you are representing Ingersoll as a county member, just like we all represent Ingersoll? You represent Ingersoll on the county, and you can't suggest anything that could perhaps be, this is a very small collection of people. It's a big impact. Is there no way for us to say, can we have pockets of people across Oxford County that might have the same problem that could see a big impact? So, maybe we should think about a policy that allows us to phase them gradually? I'm just suggesting if that's possible.
So, I just want to clear up a misconception there.
Okay.
I do not represent Ingersoll views on County Council. I represent Oxford County views on Oxford County Council. They're same as everybody, council in here does not represent where they live in Ingersoll. They represent that I have to look at, I have to look at what is best for the county policy there. The town of Ingersoll Council, as a whole, of which I'm a member of, can say, we want, we recommend this direction. That does not bind me as a County Council member to that direction there, because I am not, and I'll take myself out of it. If anybody here is a County Councillor from Ingersoll, you've been elected to that position because that's the jurisdiction. But, the worst thing for our county, the best thing about our county is that we, we work, we're stronger because we work together. And that's our motto, is growing stronger together. You do not want County Councillors to sit there and go, this is the best for my jurisdiction, because I'm going to tell you right now, that's not going to be good for Ingersoll when other councillors make that decision at that table. The best thing you can have is what's best for Oxford County as that jurisdiction. But I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to looking at this. I'm opposed to saying that I'm making a decision right now saying whether it's supported or not, because I don't have enough information to know what the outcome of that is. So I know I'm getting into the jurisdiction stuff here, but don't take that as not support. Take it as, you have to be very careful when you make decisions on this type of thing, because there's far-reaching consequences that may come out of it.
Okay. So that's final question. So basically, we're not able to suggest that this might happen across Oxford County and that we have a different approach? Is that possible or not possible?
This council could pass a resolution. I don't know, it doesn't mean that, again, County Council will make a decision based off what the information they have, and that's, that's...
So we can propose a motion as council?
If I could, speaking as municipal staff, this is not Ingersoll policy. This is county policy. I don't actually know the details of their policy or how they would implement it, but the one thing I can tell you is, my advice to this council is, you can pass a resolution that you can send to Oxford County. It has absolutely no legal bearing or weight whatsoever, so I want to manage that expectation, just that they can completely rip it up, burn it, throw it away, do whatever they want to it. It doesn't mean that council can't pass that resolution, it's just that they can completely ignore us if they choose to, okay? But there is nothing illegal of you doing a resolution, but there's also nothing illegal of them ignoring said resolution. So, they could also hear it. My suggestion to all the residents is, and I want to agree with what the mayor said, it's fantastic when people come out and, you know, support individuals. It's fantastic when people come and speak about something as eloquently as you guys have already done tonight. I recommend, and this is a great practice run for you guys, go up to Oxford County and do the same pitch. You have examples of the policy being implemented in different areas. Talk about that. I think you're on a good path. That would be what I would do if I were you, and, you know, that's the right way to do that. So, I think you're on the right path, but, you know, council can do a resolution, just be cognizant that it may be a bit in name only. They may, they may listen to it. They may.
What I would say is that, this, is that you've been heard at Oxford County Council. You've been heard at staff. You're going to be heard on Wednesday. This issue has been identified. You're being, like, it is being, it's being worked on and identified. I like that you've brought recommendations for, you know, it's not just, we have a problem, it's how can we, how can we solve the problem. So, you're doing the right things. Oxford County is the right place to do it. I don't think that, I don't think anybody around the table is going to say they don't support you for advocating for what you think is the best policy at Oxford County. That's what I would say, is that I would support you a hundred percent to go there and talk to Oxford County and the councillors and say, hey, this is their problem, just like you did tonight, and say, this is the changes we want, because they're the, they're the advocates, they're the, they're the people that can affect change in this.
It's the presidents that are out there now. The councils, different councils have passed to take the burden. Let the developers, the guys with the deep pockets, look after this, instead of the people that are just getting by. That's one of the main, that's one of the main reasons we're here. And we're hoping to get your support from County Council.
I can guarantee you that develop, developers are paying their share, and you are not paying for that extra development that's going out there. That was the first question I asked County Staff. The first answer I got back is that you are not being asked to pay for the pipes, the pipe size and the pipe diameter and the stuff that's going past your properties out there. Actually, development charges are for a lot of it. Those are charges that lead to that, and that the developer, those, those properties that are out past there will pay their share, what that is. But, again, that's why we need to have the public information session tomorrow. There's going to be a lot of good information there, and that we can have that discussion and have that information flow.
Go ahead.
If I may, again, it seems like we have a councilwoman who is sympathetic to our cause. We've asked council to make a motion. Are you saying that you're denying our request?
Not, not at all. We're just, this is just the questions phase, and then once we have, once we have all the questions finished, then we'll go into, we do have a proposed motion, but we, there'll be...
Great, thank you.
Counselor Van Kooten-Boston.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this question of, the public information session tomorrow, will it tell then exactly what the seventeen thousand dollars is being proposed to be paid for then? Because I'm curious myself as to what that seventeen thousand is paying for? If, if the developer's paying for the pipe to go past their house themselves, it's coming out of DC charges, then the seventeen thousand is to pay for the pipes going to their house?
So, the seven...
I'm, I'm not asking any of you, sorry. Please, again, I'm asking that of my mayor at this point in time, okay?
Again.
And, and if, and if the answer is tomorrow, then I need to attend the public information session as well, and that's why I'm asking.
Absolutely. The answer is tomorrow. But I will say, nobody right now is getting sent a bill for seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. That is the maximum amount in the bylaw that is allowed to be charged, the cap level. It could be a lot more. It could be twenty-five thousand dollars. The fee is brought down. The problem with that number is, is that the charges, the, the amount that's needed to make that investment has not been calculated yet. The work has not been done. So it's impossible to say what that charge is right now. And I think that's where a lot of the issue started with. Having that seventeen thousand numbers is not the proper, in my opinion, is not the proper thing to tell somebody when we don't have the, what I would rather receive myself is, what is the actual cost we're facing here? It could be a lot lower, but that is the maximum that is, at any, any project in Oxford County, that is the maximum that somebody will pay to hook up.
Which is why we're not contesting that part of it. We understand that there'll be additional information. What we are upset about is the mandatory nature of connecting to the service, and fifteen thousand is an estimate, and that doesn't include landscaping or internal renovations that have to go on top of that.
Counselor Hallerid, please.
Thank you. So I think that was very clear demarcation from what I was thinking. If you tell me that I have to pay seventeen thousand today, whether I'm paying it this month, next month, or next year, it's still a lot, a lot of money. What I'm saying is, what you had just explained, that if they came to county and they did a delegation, and this delegation was explaining the same thing, you're saying that if on county, there's needing to be a vote to agree to a recommendation that they suggest, you're not going to be able to say that because you're not representing Ingersoll. Like, I just want to really understand then what the point is, if they go to county, because it's still the mayor's of county that vote, right? And we have a community where this is not just the only example we're going to get. We're going to get it across Oxford County. So if they came and they say, for one thing, I just want to know if this can be delayed and not be mandatory with, and lacking for a vote, wouldn't that be you being able to influence the vote by understanding what it means to your community? I'm just really confused.
Well, absolutely. I mean, I know, I understand what it means to the community, and I understand the problem is, is like, so, what if this was happening in Norwich, or if it's happening in, in Isor or Tavistock? I think those residents would want me to take the same look as if it was from Ingersoll. And so I want the same, I want the other people around Oxford County Council to not look at issues just from a Woodstock or Isor or Tavistock lens. I want them to take a look at Oxford Countywide and what that means to an Oxford County resident and Ingersoll and that. But I'm not going to say, when, when, I'll be honest. I'll tell you what I will support and I tell you what I won't support on Wednesday, is I will sup, we have time on this, no, and so I support to looking at different options and understanding what those different options are and the outcome of them. So, it's not like I'm opposed to what you're presenting. I just don't have enough information at this time, but I want to look into that, because there's, there's time, maybe there's an even different solution. So, let us, let's, let's just commit, and I think, if you ask, if you ask somebody, I'm not going to speak on behalf of County Council, but personally, I think you'd have a lot better chance of success of saying, hey, look at these options and consider them, rather than make a decision tomorrow. Because that's, you know, the people around that I serve with Oxford County, they like information as much as we do here, and that we need to make a form, just like you need information to make an informed decision.
One, one good thing, like you said something about Norwich and stuff. So, I'm just wondering, do you think the people in Norwich or Tavistock or Hickson, you think they're going to feel any different than we do? About the, if that same situation went through there, would they feel any different than we do about this?
If I could, I'll speak to that one. Previously, I was the CIO of Norwich. It is possible that they could, because they may have systems that were created a long time ago, and they may be desperate for connections. So we had that when I was previously working at the municipality of Bayham. We had a lot of water systems that were failing because septic systems were polluting them. So we put in sewers, a lot of those. It was very expensive. I remember it being twenty-something thousand back in early two thousands. And, but those individuals were having problems with their water system. So it can be, and that, that's what does make it difficult, is that those policy decisions, there can be very varying degrees, right? So, but I think the advice the mayor's giving you there, I, I think is good advice. I think, go to County Council, say, we would like to know that you've actually considered this option, and/or tell us why some jurisdictions can try some of these options, but why can't we? And I think those are very fair questions that are being asked. So, you're, you're on the right path, and I would say, don't give up. You're, you're on the right path.
The only other thing I wanted to add was just that we already have, like we said, we already have the precedent for the option, option at various communities here throughout Ontario. Really all were, and in those opt-in auctions, actually, it comes upon the individual residents to sign a waiver for them to be actual, to take on that risk. So it alleviates the concern that you had earlier in regards to the poisoning of the water or anything like that. We're just looking to give freedom to the individual constituents, to allow them to make their decisions when it's financially viable for them, right? And really all we're asking for from council is some sort of support on the Oxford County level, be it a, a letter, a motion like they had mentioned today, so that we can have basically your, you behind us as we go forward to make our further presentations.
Counselor Hudson, then Deputy Mayor Wilson, please.
Thank you, through you. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone that came tonight, and I really appreciate hearing from everyone. And I have no problem standing behind you and writing a letter to county, just saying that I also agree that an opt-in option, it's just financially the better way to go, I think, with the waiver, and it's, it's precedent and centered in other places, so I don't have a problem doing that on my behalf as a council member. Okay? You're welcome.
Counselor Hallerid, please.
I know you're...
Deputy Mayor, then Counselor Hallerid.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. As others have said, it is always nice to see the gallery full of people, you know, exercising their right to express their concerns and giving us the opportunity to support our residents. So thank you for taking the time to be here on a Monday night. And I don't want to rush the end of the delegation, but when it does conclude, I'd like to move for a ten-minute recess, just to give us time to consult staff with the information we've been given. So I'd be looking for a second around that.
Counselor Hallerid, please.
Thank you. So, I think just to end the delegation, we've heard very clearly, I do support Counselor Hudson's suggestion that we can kind of just send a letter, even if nothing, because again, I understand what Mike, you just said about, some municipalities might need it because of their age. I think we've prided ourselves in Ingersoll with a very good asset management, that we do our water treatments, we do a regular, we're on a cycle. Even though we know we're aging, I feel like because we have that information at our fingertips, we're able to maybe suggest something like a phased move or a phased update, and that's all these guys are asking. And I think it's a simple, if we can all concur to just at least send a letter to reconsider different factions and what they might want, so that it's not forced on people, because everyone has so much to deal with, and if they have to deal with county, let it at least be that we have been heard. Because now, county is not existing in oblivion. It's all people from all the municipalities that make up county, and I would expect that that helps to channel, you know, concerns from our municipalities. So I think I really support the letter, and if anyone else would at least agree to that, and then maybe we can have staff help us out with something afterwards. And that's my final take.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not necessarily a question, but just a comment. First of all, thank you for the delegation, and I really enjoyed the animation when it come to clicking the slide deck. It was, that was pretty good. Anyway, I too have to agree with Counselor Hudson. I think that our CIO has pointed out that we can send a letter. It may be overlooked. It may be used as, as part of the, the package for the vote, or it could be just simply torn up or thrown out. But, I, I don't know. I think I'd feel a little bit better if we did just send a letter of support, saying that we have heard the delegation, and that these are the concerns. But again, that would be up to the mover of the motion to make sure that that's in there, so that's my two cents.
Any further questions? Counselor, you said you were off the screen, so did you have a, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm sitting here listening to all the comments that have been made, and, you know, definitely would be in agreeance with sending a note up to County Council, saying that, you know, and it does make sense to have that opt-in, but there also has to be that aspect that, it has to be monitored, because, you know, they will eventually need to connect to the system. And in today's dollars, it will not be the same as what it is in twenty years, ten years, five years. It'll be more expensive. So, everybody has to, definitely has to realize that that money in ten years is going to be considerably more. So, it's, like you said, it's, it's one of those things, you just invested twenty thousand dollars into a septic system, why do you need to spend another twenty thousand dollars to connect to another system? But definitely, I support sending some, sending a letter of support up to the county in regards to some of the recommendations that these gentlemen have made today.
Thank you. There is any further questions? Am I sure? No? Thank you very much for your presentation, and I...
Does the stage have to end after the recess, or...
Oh, absolutely. You can stay all evening. We prefer it.
You can change the slide deck.
We'll, we'll keep you as long as we can. I knew there was a motion to, I believe Deputy Mayor Wilson was asking to make a motion for recess.
A motion to recess for ten minutes before a motion on this particular delegation is tabled.
Thank you. And Counselor Van Kooten-Boston's discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Does Carrie reconvene at eight-twenty, please?
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Counselor Hillary, you have a motion, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, through you, Mayor. So moved by myself, Counselor Hillary, seconded by Counselor Hudson, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll receive the delegation from Daryl Hall, Dave, sorry, how do I say your name, Ulch, and Evan McHugh regarding the installation of storm and sanitary sewers King Street West as information. And that Council recommend to Oxford County to listen to the residents of Ingersoll and consider the opt-in option for connecting services in Oxford County. And that Ingersoll Council ask Oxford County Council to explain to Ingersoll residents the advantages and disadvantages of an opt-in option to connect to services. And that Ingersoll Council ask Oxford County Council to explain to Ingersoll residents the options for, for paying for connecting, including that they may experience undue hardship in paying for connectivity. And that Ingersoll Council advise Oxford County Council that the Town of Ingersoll is willing to assist in improving communication surrounding issues of this nature going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Van Cooten-Bossen.
I can support that. Thank you. That's why I went in and said my piece, but thank you for bringing forth a motion that I feel that I can support. I understand. It, please understand that I do understand where you're coming from. But I also don't want to tie the hands of our County Council either, and I want them to listen to you, hence the reason why I just listened to that motion very carefully, and I can support that. You're asking them to, we're asking them to listen to you. And that's, I think, the best thing that you could have come from this Council in that respect. My hope is that they take and defer any kind of making a decision tomorrow, or Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday, I apologize, Wednesday, and really look at the options that you have presented to us tonight, and come up with what would be in the best interest of Oxford County and for you. So I will be fully supporting that motion. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Bowman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to concur with what Counselor Van Cooten-Bossen has said. I think if nothing else, this opens up the lines of dialogue, gets everybody talking, everybody gets to know where everybody stands. So I, I think this is a very good start, except for the fact that I'm not gonna direct County Council on what their decision would be for or against, but I think this does, again, open up the lines of communication.
Counselor Hillary, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for, for coming out, and I think this is what democracy is about, we have to listen to people, even when we can't do anything, we at least kind of try to move, move the direction of people considering. And this is all we can do, and we've done our best. The rest is left to County. So hopefully, at least like everyone's mentioned, the lines of communication are open, and I think that's the most important thing. So thank you all for coming out.
Further discussion. Deputy Mayor Wilson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I, I just want to say thanks to Counselor Hillary and, and staff for helping form a motion that, that I feel comfortable getting behind. We received a lot of information today. There's a lot of information already available on the public information website that hopefully people can access. And in terms of process, we took a minute to kind of get our bearings and, and get something on paper that I think supports the residents, but also gives the county some options to consider for the future. So I'm happy with, I, I hope I'm happy with where we've gotten, and hopefully residents will continue to advocate and, and, and participate, because this is a kind of a two-way, two-way democracy, so it is great to see people kind of pushing and advocating for what's best for, for themselves, and hopefully, we've, you know, as you admitted when we got here, this is about as much as Ingersoll can do, but it is something, and enjoy your next delegation, keep going.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing done, I'll just say that I'll be abstaining from the vote, because I do have a role on County Council to play, and I think that Council will speak with their collective voice here, so. I'll call the vote, then, all in favor? Opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you. We will now, oh, sorry, just not, sorry, I can't, procedure. We can talk later, but.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we can talk, for sure. So we will now move on to Liz Whismer-VanMeer, sorry, it's not an easy one, on behalf of Big Brothers Big Sisters, please.
Oh, everyone's leaving now. Hey, I sat through your presentation, you can stay for mine, come on. Alrighty, well, good evening, Mayor Petrie, Council members and staff. I won't keep, keep you too long, I know this has been, I know what long meetings are like, I can appreciate that as a counselor. So I am Liz Whismer-VanMeer, I'm the manager of communications at Big Brothers Big Sisters. I've been there for close to six years now, and I'm here today just to talk to you quickly about what Big Brothers Big Sisters is doing in Oxford County, but also Big Brothers Big Sisters Month, which is something that we are currently recognizing here in Oxford County. It doesn't want to go, there we go. So each September, we proudly celebrate Big Brothers Big Sisters Month across Canada. We recognize Big Brothers Big Sisters Day on September 18th. We have been providing mentorship programs for over a century in Canada, and we have inspired thousands of Canadians to help youth realize their full potential. You'll probably see teal popping up in the storefronts here in Ingersoll as well, that is a part of our Big Brothers Big Sisters Month celebrations with Turn the Town Teal. It just keeps going back between the screens. There we go. Okay. So our vision is that all people realize their full potential, and our mission is enabling life-changing mentorship, mentoring relationships to ignite the power and potential of young people. Who we are, we are a mentoring program. We've been in Oxford County for 55 years now. You may remember that we were Woodstock and area, as well as Woodstock and district, and then Ingersoll and Telford and area. In 2019, the fearless leader of Ingersoll for so many years, Deb Landin, was getting ready for retirement, and it was at that time that the two agencies felt it was best to become one to better serve Oxford County together. We worked so closely together, as was at that time anyways, and we looked at that as an opportunity to be able to come together, and I would say that it has been one of the best decisions that the agency has made, because we have one heck of a great team that services all of Oxford County together. What we are not, unfortunately, is having a name that does a bit of a disservice to us. Our name sounds kind of fluffy, feel-good, as a big brother, big sister, kind of like that big sibling or that role model that you want to have in your life. It makes it sound like it's a nice-to-have, but we are a need-to-have, and that's one thing that people aren't always realizing, is that this is something that young people need in their lives. This is a lengthy slide, so I'm just gonna grab a couple of points of what we are, so people know. We are a social service agency that employs professional caseworkers that support the public. programs that offer measurable outcomes. These are educated individuals. They are very highly trained and extremely great at the work that they do. We have zero costs associated to our agencies for families in Oxford County. So when a family comes to us looking for supports for their young person, there is nothing that they are paying to be a part of that. There's no enrollment cost. Anytime that we are participating in community events, taking them out, horseback riding, going to archery, bowling, whatever it may be, there is no cost to them. We also make sure that there's no barriers to that as well. So if transportation becomes an issue for that individual or for that family, we do everything we can, whether it's volunteer driving them, a staff, or public transit, we ensure that our families face no barriers at all. We are also an agency that provides prevention and intervention for young people. The one thing that we are really trying to get the message out is that we are a preventative measure. In today's day and age, we are seeing a systemic issue that's taking over not only our municipalities but across Ontario, across Canada, and across the world. And we know that when we reach youth at a young age and we are there to assist them at their most vulnerable stages, that is a preventative measure that we at Big Brothers, Big Sisters are very proud to be able to offer to young people to help support them through those tough times. We also offer unique mentoring relationships, and our mentoring, our mentor training is actually based on the needs of the individual child. So when a person's being matched, we support them through that training to make sure that they are completely prepared to be matched with that young person. Last year, here in Oxford County, 630 young people were mentored in Oxford County through that year. That is both our one-to-one and group mentoring programs that we offer in Oxford County. We have seen an increase year after year, 200% over the last two years, 200% in 2022 and another 200% in 2023. In the first quarter of this year, so that's only going up to about the end of April, we had already received 100 applications. So we haven't finished this first quarter yet, but the applications are not slowing down. Through the summer, we typically don't see a lot of applications come in. We might have one or two. We had 25. So that number is drastically growing every single month. We do see pandemic-induced negative impacts, and this is on the mental health, education, and the social competencies of the young people that are coming into our programs. Here in Ingersoll, we currently have 25 mentees that are waiting for a match. So that does not include young people that are in our school-based programs. So if we have a young person that's looking for an in-school mentoring or a young person that's waiting to be a part of Go Girls, Game On, or All Play, the group mentoring programs we have, those numbers aren't reflected in this. This is just the 25 young people that are waiting to be matched one-on-one with a big brother or big sister. You can see our waitlist has fluctuated in the past year. This time last year, in August 2023, we were at about 157. We saw the number go up at the beginning of, the end of the year, beginning of this year. That's pretty normal. We saw that number take a nice decrease over a couple of months. We've plateaued, but that number is already climbing back up. Through the fall, end of year, that's when we see a large number of applications and enrollment come. So we are preparing for that number to drastically jump again. So how do we do what we do? Well, the first thing is that we have a really strong and passionate team at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We're a small but mighty team of about nine employees. That's caseworkers, that's people like myself doing communications to get our messaging out there, fund development, and our executive director. So we don't have a lot of staff, but we are a strong and passionate team. We do what we do. People don't go into not-for-profit to make a lot of money. They go into it because it is a passion and you care about what you're doing. But behind us, we are built on a foundation of really incredible volunteers. We wouldn't exist without volunteers. So we are thankful every day for the incredible folks that we have had the opportunity to work with and that we continue to work with. We are not government-funded. That is probably one of the most shocking things that people learn about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. As a social service agency, we receive no ongoing government funding. The only government funding we would receive is through government entities' grants that we would apply for. So those typically come from the Ontario Trillium Foundation and the Ministry of Education. Other than that, we rely on our really good friends at United Way Oxford, our fundraising events, sponsors, donors, as well as grants. And of course, we can't, we'd be remiss to not thank our incredible friends here at the Town of Ingersoll who have been dedicated and generous supporters of Big Brothers, Big Sisters for many years. So we are very thankful for your continued support of our agency and our programs. And that, of course, leads to what our biggest needs are: mentors and funding. We need mentors, really drastically need mentors right now. We are seeing, like we've said, these numbers continue to grow. Unfortunately, the number of volunteers is not keeping up to that enrollment fee or that enrollment number. We have an amazing volunteer recruitment engagement coordinator who works tirelessly. She is in communities all over Oxford County. You've probably seen her here in Ingersoll a few times. She's often here at the library, just setting up to chat with folks. She's been at the senior service, been there to chat with folks as well, doing everything we can to get the word out there that we need these volunteers. So we are asking folks who are watching today, listening today, to help us get that word out as well, because it's the word of mouth, and it is the folks who've had experience of being mentors as well or being a mentee that help us really get that message to. So as I just said, we, people are asking us, we have, "Do I have a mentor yet?" is probably the number one question we hear from our mentees. And I'm sure you could imagine how hard it is for our staff to look at them and say, "Not yet, but we're working really hard. We're going to find you a mentor. We're doing everything we can." But it still breaks your heart a little bit every single time you have to say that to that young person. So we're asking our friends here at council, the staff, and the community of Ingersoll to just highlight what we're doing in your community. Talk about what Big Brothers, Big Sisters is doing. Go to our social media, share our posts, share our content. Feel free to reach out to any of us at Big Brothers, Big Sisters anytime. If you have questions, if you want to learn more about the programs, come to our events if you are free, anything that you, questions that you may have, we are there to always answer those questions and help, whatever we can do to help get our word out there through other folks like yourself. I won't go through the testimonials, but we have so many great testimonials that we like to share from caregivers and mentees. And a lot of folks forget that sometimes the biggest impact is on the mentor. And one of our mentors recently said, "I already see a lifelong friendship being built." And they had been matched for about six months at that time. That was two years ago, and they are the closest buds you could ever meet. They are just so connected. It's those kind of stories that you love to share because you see the impact of mentorship on the mentor and the mentee. So we are continuing to ask folks to understand that mentoring is, mentoring youth is more than just giving your time. It's actually an investment in the future of our communities, not only here in Ingersoll but throughout Oxford County. We are creating meaningful change for those who need it the most. So we're asking everyone here in Ingersoll to join us in shaping brighter futures for the young folks here in Ingersoll and throughout Oxford County. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Van Coetan-Bossens, please.
Thank you through you. Liz, thanks for being here. We at the Senior Centre are welcoming you in on Friday, and we're hoping that we might be able to get some of those mentors for you. We have a wealth of volunteers out there. People are going to ask this question, so I'm going to ask it. What kind of time commitment is involved in being a mentor? How many hours a day or week or month, you know, does a typical mentor give to your program? And is there different types of mentors?
Yes, that's a great question. Thank you so much for that. We have 11 programs, and they all kind of offer different, different time requirements and qualifications behind them. So if you were going to be a traditional one-to-one match, like a big brother, big sister, you'd be looking for about, I mean, two to four hours once a week that you would be meeting, and that's on the what works best for the mentor and the mentee and their family. We also have group programming that's community-based and school-based. So community-wise, they typically run from about eight to 12 weeks. It just depends on what activity they're doing. So if they're doing horseback riding, they often come here to Ingersoll to do karate. So, you know, like they, those programs depend on what the actual activity is, but it's usually a minimum eight weeks to 12 weeks. That's about an hour to two hours once a week through those eight to 12 weeks. School-based does change in the fact that those are a little more time-restricted. We have an hour for in-school mentoring, so that's a one-to-one match. You'd have one hour, one day a week at the elementary school of the mentee, and you're only going during the school year. You are actually not able to meet with your mentee outside of school time in those situations. And the group programming, which is our Go Girls, Game On, and All Play, those programs run for eight weeks at a time, and it's one hour once a week again. So there is really a lot of, a lot of opportunities. We even have family, family matches. There's a family here from Ingersoll, the Palmer family, who were matched with their mentee from a young age right till he graduated from the program at 18, and they still meet regularly. And so, you know, that was an opportunity for a couple who had reached retirement, and they felt like there was something they could do to give back, and it was suggested to them, actually by Deb Landon, to consider it. And they became a couple match and met with this young guy for many years. And so it's, there are many opportunities. There's, that's why we ask folks to ask those questions, come to a BIGS one-on-one information session, because that's a chance to sit down, learn about the programs, and we want to make sure you're going into the program that's best for you as well, because nobody wants this to not work for the mentor or the mentee. So we work really hard to make sure we're getting you in the right program.
Thank you.
Counselor Halleru, please.
Thank you. What's the age range for the kids? And can you actually specifically ask for a specific age group?
So the mentees are six years to 18 years. The only exception to that is our PRISM program, which is P-R-I-S-M, and that's Pride, Respect, Identity, Safety Mentoring. So those are the youths that are in our LGBTQ+ community. They have the ability to go to 21 years of age. It's just over the years of bringing this program in that felt like we needed to be able to add a bit of time to allow for folks to still be in a safe environment and safe space. So six to 18 is the, is the programs that we offer through community-based, school-based for those young folks, and then PRISM would be up to 21. And if you're looking to be matched with somebody, typically if there's, I mean, if you walked in and said, "I want a specific age," that might be tricky at times because we have to make sure that the match is based on the interests and the positive, healthy relationship. But we do have folks that come in. We've had actually quite a few that have been lately looking to be matched with teenagers, you know, young teens to mid-teens, so just because they felt that was the most comfortable for them. So that is definitely part of the consideration when you're coming in.
Follow-up question. So is it a concern if someone wanted to mentor, say, a teenager, and they also had a teenager, or you prefer someone who didn't have a teenager?
No. No, it's actually very common for folks that have young children and their families to do activities with their mentee and their, their children. It's, you know, it's, it's not, obviously, that's part of the process of going, becoming a mentor. There's a, there's a very thorough application process, but that's part of what is, is also considered. So many times we see families that have teenagers themselves, or sometimes they have teenagers and they'll take a younger mentee, and that teen becomes part of that relationship too.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Always lovely to cross paths with you, Liz. I think the one thing you touched on in your presentation, and that was a light bulb for me in understanding the work of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, is that it's not a fluffy nice-to-have. It's a social service agency that has become a need-to-have for communities and for youth who need that support as they grow into adulthood. And even understanding the interactions that your staff have beyond the match, supporting the family, getting them connected to resources in their community, because in some cases this kind of might be their go-to to understand where the resources are to support their family. So the investment that Ingersoll makes in Big Brothers, Big Sisters is money well-spent in spades. But thank you for coming back and sharing how that impact is kind of being felt in our community, because we don't always kind of hear what happens on the other side. So I think it's really nice for people to kind of hear how that support has made a difference for the people in our community. And I am moving towards a question, which is, I know Big Brothers, Big Sisters has also been doing a lot of work in supporting volunteerism and volunteer capacity, so I wondered if you would just touch on that. Maybe, I hope Big Brothers, Big Sisters is an option for lots of people, but for me personally, for example, I'm just not in a point in my life where I could make that commitment, but I know Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been supporting increasing volunteerism across the community lately as well.
Yeah, it's actually something that our volunteer engagement coordinator, Erica, has taken on. It's not, we're not just always out there advocating for volunteers for our agency. We realize that being a mentor is a big step for people, and sometimes you're just not in the right space in your life to make that commitment. But we, we see plenty of other agencies that still desperately need assistance, you know. She has, Erica's worked very closely with Robin from the Alzheimer's Society. They created the Volunteer Recruitment Fair that does go throughout Oxford County, and part of that is to collectively come together as not-for-profit agencies. That was a goal of our agency in the last couple of years, was to really start collaborating and making, building stronger partnerships throughout the community to know that we're not the only ones who need volunteers and being able to share that with other folks. So the Recruitment Fair is one piece that they have really worked hard on creating and giving opportunities for folks throughout the county to be a part of that, to, to advocate and also promote what they're looking for.
Counselor Halleru, please.
Thank you. Liz, as I hear you talk about the different, how diverse is the mentor pool?
Um, it's, it has definitely, the diversity has definitely grown over the years. And so EDI is something that our, our agency, specifically our executive director, has taken a big chunk of the role on into working not only with herself and other executive directors and our national, but with the staff as well. So we're trying to, we have a lot of young people that are coming in from cultural diversities, religious diversities and such, that we don't want any young person to feel like they're not welcomed or safe in our environment. So it's something that we take very seriously and something that we have definitely happily been able to see some more mentors coming in as well to meet that. So we understand that some young people might feel intimidated if they aren't matched with somebody perhaps that they know well or maybe doesn't share some of the same experiences they have in their life, and that's the same for the young people in our LGBTQ+ community. So it's something we take very seriously, and it's something that we do work quite hard. We've had the options or had the opportunity to deal with some of our local groups as well to spread that word.
So as, I will personally commit to be a mentor right now, because I think I've been thinking about it, and I feel like it's, it's calling me. But the thing is, would I have permission to help reach out to a community to say, "You're seeing increased diversity, and we need to do more"? It's almost like a call and aid, that you need that support. So I think I'll take that on, and I will be seeing you soon.
Perfect. Thank you. Any, any time that somebody can help us. There are many aspects of this community, not only here in Ingersoll but across Oxford County, that we don't always have access to, or we don't know an individual that can help us speak to different, different areas within our community. So any opportunity that we have to spread the word, we appreciate, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Excellent. Any further questions to the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time, everyone. Have a great night.
You as well. Counselor Van Coetan-Bossens, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wilson, that the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll receives Big Brother, Big Sisters of Oxford County's delegation regarding an organizational, organizational update as presented by Liz Wismer Van Meere as information.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none, others in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And now we'll call upon Ben Lampkin, please. Welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, fellow residents.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, fellow residents, Mr. Use, pay-per-view customers at home. I am Ben Lampkin, um, resident at 309 Bell Street in Ingersoll, Ontario. Glad to be here as a delegate tonight, and I have enjoyed watching the live version of council. I apologize for my multiple appearances on the council agenda. Over the summertime, I had some technical difficulties and then some communication lapses, and I do appreciate, um, the efforts, uh, continually of our town clerk, Danielle, uh, to reach out to me and her patients. A wise man once said, "Freedom is contagious." Bylaw 15-4840, to prescribe standards for the maintenance of land in the town of Ingersoll. Section 3, Lot Maintenance Standards, 3.1, every person shall keep all lands which he, she, or they may own, lease, or occupy cleared. 3.11, for the purpose of paragraph 3.1, cleared includes the removal of weeds, grass, and other natural growth in excess of 20 centimeters in height. I wish to preserve the quiet enjoyment of my yard. My belief is that the current bylaw extends itself beyond the appropriate jurisdiction. I'm not creating a danger to life or life safety. My landscaping choices should be my own. Ingersoll should be quick to follow the progressive green example provided by other municipalities, including the city of London, in its action earlier this year. There are many net benefits to be realized in removing this overreaching bylaw. The beautification of lands being preserved in a more natural modality, the reduction of the production of greenhouse gas emissions, the reduction of more CO2 through increased photosynthesis, the reduction of the production of noise pollution, and in regards to administration, a reduction in administration, and the reduction of the costs of that administration, and the future costs of administration. I'm asking that today, uh, council accept my delegation, delegation, excuse me, as information, and I thank you for entertaining my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Other questions of the delegation? Councilor Halleru, please.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for that presentation. I liked it very much, but I have a question for you. How beautiful is your yard?
Well, my personal opinion is that it's very beautiful. Uh, I have a number of native species. I happen to have, um, a ravine lot. Um, this spring, it was very nice. Uh, there was a number of different flowers. Most of them I can't identify. Uh, I have a particular affinity for, uh, my Scotch thistles, which have a really nice bloom to them. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a beautiful yard.
So, I wish you brought us pictures, because in the description of that, I can envision a very different, a very different picture in my mind, and I think that would, would have helped. Um, nature is beautiful, but sometimes it can look unkept. It can look, um, unhealthy. Um, it can affect other neighbors. So, there's the reason that that bylaw exists, but however, I think it would be important to provide more information, if you, if you will, and that would be my request of you. A picture would help before we consider this next step.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Hudson, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll receive Ben Lampkin's delegation regarding the property standards bylaw, bylaw 15-4840, section 3.1, grasscutting as information. Uh, and I need to, to finish writing here, but, um, and that staff review the property standards bylaw within, I'll say, 18 months, um, and of course, looking for feedback and amendments if that's, uh, if there's, if there's more detail from my colleagues. I would need a second, or...
Is there a second to present motion? Councilor Hudson still on the second? Discussion. Would you like to speak to the...
Uh, sure, I will. Um, in our last budget meeting, uh, council did direct staff to look at, um, grasscutting across the municipality and our parks and recreation. So, in theory, some of that work might be done through that process that may apply to the property standards. Staff may come back and say there's perfectly logical reasons for the property standards, or they may say that, uh, native species and Scotch thistles are fine, and, and there's a reason to review it. Um, but, you know, given that grasscutting is something that staff are already reviewing through, uh, parks, it seems reasonable that we could look at it. Uh, this is hopefully a long runway to review it, too, 18 months. I know there's a, a lot of other priorities, but, um, there are other municipalities looking at, you know, do we really need to cut our grass once a week? Is there a benefit other than your neighbors might prefer it? Uh, some people love the more natural look, and there's native species, and that supports our ecosystem. So, there's, there's other reasons to consider, um, alternative options in property standards.
Further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. And, thank you for being patient. Sam Mansbridge, please.
So, I do have these, if you guys want to... Thank you for taking time to see my presentation today. I am Sam Mansbridge. I am an artist and organizer of the idea I'm pitching, which is the Nature Art Walk. I am the owner of Aftermath Tattoo Studios in town. I'm looking to have an art walk showcasing hand-painted and curated natural canvases and sculptures along the trail by the dog park. This vision creates a unique immersive experience that combines art and nature, making art accessible to everyone while celebrating the na- natural beauty of Ingersoll. The purpose is to boost community engagement, attract tourists, and offer a space for local artists to showcase their work. To get the community involved, this event is designed to be inclusive, drawing in families, art lovers, and outdoor enthusiasts. I have some examples of the art, which you can pass around. Um, smaller canvases I was hoping to hand out to schools and have some students take place with them. These aren't completed. They're just, like, rough. Um, so, the layout is going to be thoughtfully placed along the Lawson Trail, encouraging visitors to explore the path while enjoying the installations. From painted wood to natural materials, larger sculptures to blend seamlessly with the surroundings, um, I'm hoping to have some interactive areas like sun catchers. It would have an economic impact with increased foot traffic in town that can boost local businesses. Cultural enrichment elevates Ingersoll as a hub for creativity and culture, environmental awareness by featuring nature-inspired art, and the walk will promote appreciation for the conservation of local natural resources. I'm seeking from council approval for the use of space and potential assistance with, um, promotional support. Uh, we will do all the putting the art up. We have, like, a whole staff team for that, and we're encouraging local artists to participate, to promote the event on official channels. My studio is also looking to donate, um, mini sketchbooks and also mini wood for, like, a station for kids to interact on the trail on opening day and also closing day, and I was hoping to run the event from October 11th through October 20th, giving people in town for Thanksgiving a chance to walk through, kind of thing. I'm looking forward to your feedback. And do you have any questions, basically? Thanks for waiting for me.
Thank you very much. Questions of the delegation? Councilor Hudson, please.
Thanks for coming, Sam. Um, sounds like a great idea. I love it. I'm just wondering, are you hoping to do this this October?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds, seems really quick.
I'm very organized.
Yeah, this is great. I love it. It, it sounds really fun. I love how you're getting kids involved and schools involved, and, yeah, love it.
Councilor Hudson, sorry, Councilor Halleru, and then Councilor Van Coop and Bossins, please.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say this is exciting. It is beautiful. Anything to bring attention to our trails or Ingersoll in, in general, um, this is what we seek for creativity, people that have ideas to bring them forward. This is an amazing way to engage the town. And like, uh, Councilor Hudson says, you're bringing kids in, hand-painted. I love the, um, the wood, that connection to nature. So needed, so needed for our kids to get off the computers and, and get into the woods and then explore art. Um, so, yeah, thank you so much for bringing this up, and I think there's also a sense of belonging by seeing how you've identified different groups to come out, educational opportunities. Um, I think council will be very willing, uh, to support anything like this, but personally, I think this is something we should get behind for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I just want to say thank you for coming again. Um, so, she came before our Trails Committee, uh, just last week, um, and the Trails Committee really felt that it should come here and be heard, um, at council. We, the, the committee was unanimous in, in wanting to see this go further, but it really is the decision of council to make. Um, so, I just wanted to make sure I put that out there, that your Trails Committee, um, that, uh, has been, been meeting, has met with her already and fully supports this, and I, thank you for bringing the, um, actual things. I, I think it's great. What was the date again? Because I missed that. You were going so quick, I missed that, so...
Um, October 11th through 20th.
20th, okay. Excellent. So, that whole entire time, people could be going out on the trail, seeing what's out there, and at the beginning, on the 11th, and then again on the 20th, you would have the, the, um, art supplies there for kids to be able to, to, now, would those art supplies stay there for the entire time, or just on the 11th and just on the 20th?
I was hoping to have a schedule and also connect with other local businesses in the downtown core. I also have Bark and Bougie, the music store, and, uh, one of the cafes already on board to support this as well.
Excellent. Well, I fully would support this, um, going forward, and, uh, however we can help in, in any way. I think this is great, and thank you for bringing this whole project forward to us. So, thank you.
Councilor Use.
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions, actually. So, will these art displays be left out on the trails overnight and through the weekends, or, uh, what's the, what's the thought process there?
So, there's two different ways. One of my thoughts was running it 10:00 AM to 5:00 or 6:00 PM, just because of safety with the sun setting early, and then that's also the same business hours as my studio, so we could go and take things down and put them back up. Or we leave them out and just ensure they're up higher, and we just hope there isn't vandalism. I've already expressed the artist, they may never see their piece of wood ever again.
Okay, so you answered my second question in regards to missing, uh, missing artwork and that type of thing, so. Okay, no, that's, that's basically, yeah, it's a great idea. It's great, uh, great interactive, uh, something different, something new for the town. Uh, no, definitely will, uh, uh, support this by, uh, by, or for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Hudson?
Um, thank you through you. So, today are you just asking then that we approve the walk, and that, you know, you're going to connect with staff from now until then to get things finalized? Is that what you're hoping for today?
Um, basically, yeah, I need approval to even go forward with this, and I need to know what steps I need to make to make this become a reality, because I feel like it would be really good for the community.
So, we'll need to have some discussions about, uh, it'd probably have to be some sort of an agreement or something with your organization to cover that off. So, okay, as long as that's covered in the res...
Councilor Halleru, please.
Um, I wonder if we can propose a motion to say we can recognize this event as something that, um, the town can advertise on our social media network, um, to communicate...
I think, given the wording and the resolution, uh, if it, if council approves it, then our, our, we probably would move to that, and our communications would be clear. And it'd be good for us to push that out there, because then people will understand why, and hopefully it will encourage people not to vandalize the artwork, so, if they know what it's about.
Councilor Hudson, do you have a resolution, or a motion, sorry?
Yes, thanks through you. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Bowman, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll received the delegation from Sam Mansbridge and Isabel Skinner regarding Fall Nature Art Walk as information, and that council approve the Fall Nature Artwork Project scheduled October 11th to 20th, 2024, to be formalized through an agreement between the town and the delegates, as well as advertisement.
Thank you.
Discussion. Uh, I just want to say again, when it came to Trails, I was super impressed, and I still think that it's a great idea, and it's a great initiative. Uh, it's awesome that someone in town wants to organize this and make it happen. So, um, I guess my one suggestion would be, if someone is really interested in a piece of artwork, rather than trying to climb a tree and take it, is there a way to have contact information to maybe get in touch with that artist to, to maybe help that artist as well to purchase it?
So, another idea I had was possibly having the ability to even purchase some pieces at local businesses or prints, to get people doing, like, a walk into town and going into the small businesses as well, to break the down core, like downtown core involved, too.
Excellent. Further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. And, that concludes. We will now go into consideration of bylaws. Uh, Councilor Hudson, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Bowman, that the mover have leave to introduce and go into committee of the whole on the following bylaws. Bylaw 245340, amend zoning bylaw number 04-4160 as amended. Bylaw 24-5341, appoint Julie Ellis as deputy clerk. Bylaw 245342, BIA facade loan agreement. Bylaw 245343, September 9th, 2024, confirmatory bylaw. Council and committee of the whole, Mayor Petrie in the chair, a motion, the bylaws are accepted and circulated. That constitutes the first and second reading of the bylaws.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Just on the first and second... Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We're now in committee of the whole. Would anybody like to discuss any of the bylaws? Councilor Van Coop and Bossins?
Thank you. Sorry, is this the appropriate time that we could, um, have an introduction to our possible soon-new deputy clerk?
I will turn that over to our clerk, please.
Yes, so, uh, sent an email out to staff and council last week, uh, but Julie Ellis, uh, our new deputy clerk who started with us last Thursday, is here learning the, the ropes with, uh, Jessica, so the hybrid system. I am so incredibly fortunate to have Julie join the team. I know she's going to make an excellent addition, um, and so I just, uh, hope you can all join me in welcoming her, because we're, we're very fortunate. So, welcome, Julie.
Welcome. Was there any other discussion on the bylaws? Seeing none. Councilor Bowman, please. Motion to rise.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Halleru. Do the committee do now rise out of committee of the whole?
Discussion. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. And, Councilor Halleru, third reading, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, moved by myself, Councilor Halleru, seconded by Councilor Van Coop and Bossins, that the bylaws 24-5340 to 245343 be now read a third time, passed, signed, and sealed, and that this constitutes the third reading of the bylaws.
All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And, Councilor Van Coop and Bossins, to adjourn, please.
Thank you. It is my absolute pleasure to move, and it's seconded by Deputy Mayor Wilson, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Ingersoll adjourn the September 9th, 2024 regular meeting of council at, uh, 9:08 PM.
Discussion. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried, and thank you, everyone.